Let me just need more agenda.
All right, six. Oh yeah, what is our?
You can scoot over, man.
Why don't you have a screen?
It's just, it's blown out. His screen's blown out.
Oh, really?
Restarting it, plugging it up. Off the camera. Why do you know that?
Watching the YouTube video.
We could hold hands.
A screenshot of it all day.
Six o'clock, big dog.
I call this meeting to order, the Effem County Planning Board Meeting of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer, and we're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd like to ask that everyone who can, please stand with us for both. Much grace, Father, we just praise you for this time. We can come out and discuss these important issues of Effem County. Or just look on us through this meeting, just give us all safe travel home, and just continue to bless each and every person here. Lord, we lift up the sick and the needy.
Yes, Lord.
Lord, we just thank you for helping hopefully everyone get through the storm safely. And as you continue to bless our country, our president, and our troops and first responders, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our agenda, is this agenda complete, or is there any changes?
Yes, item twelve is telephone, Jay Moplin.
Okay.
Item fourteen, commercial service telephone. Item fifteen, subdivision's telephone. Item seventeen, sketch plans, telephone. And item eighteen, business license, telephone.
All right. Is it it?
Yes.
Um, there any discussion about these changes? Call for a motion to approve this agenda with the noted changes.
Motion to approve.
To approve, is there a second?
No, second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Minutes from December twelfth, any discussion? If there's none, I'll call for a motion to approve these minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. All items presented tonight will be presented again at the Board of Commissioners meeting, that meeting is February the sixth. So, this is a public hearing. This is, this board will make a recommendation to the county commissioners, that meeting will also be a public hearing. That meeting is February the sixth, also at six o'clock PM. Just like to obviously apologize, you know, after yesterday, as this meeting was scheduled for last night. And, you know, it's tough to get, make these changes so quickly, but just want to encourage everyone that, you know, if there are people who couldn't make it tonight, didn't find out, this is the first of the process. There will be two, more readings on each resoning after tonight's meeting, and they will also be public hearings. So, if there aren't people who could, found out that the meeting was changed, there is another chance to, to have your voice heard. When the item that you're here for is called, we'd like to ask that you come forward to the podium. That you would state your name for the record, is sign your name for the record, and so as we begin calling these items, staff will give us a brief overview, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come to the podium. And then, anyone else who wishes to speak on these will then be given an opportunity to speak. Anything further? So, item number one is a public hearing for Eric Smith. Request a conditional use for a rural business located at four four, four, four forty-five Golden Drive. This is the second district, Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir, so the applicant is applying for the rural business at four forty-five Golden Drive. This business will bring him into compliance, this was an active code enforcement investigation. The applicant has stated that the number of RVs will be minimal. However, it is staff's suggestion to put a specific number to the total amount of RVs at one time. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there a representative here tonight, Mr. Smith? Yes, sir.
My name's Eric Smith.
Good evening.
How are you?
Can you just tell us about your plan?
Yeah, so the plan is to just do RV repair and maintenance, it's mostly interior work that gets done. I don't do anything automotive, nothing with engines, nothing with paint, nothing with the exteriors. I don't do collision or anything like that, it's mostly just interior work, some electrical components inside, lighting, things like that. And, you know, possible faucets or, you know, showerheads or, so it's mostly, you know, construction work, really, when it comes down to it. The plan is to, you know, keep it small, keep it to a limited number, and to also, you know, build a privacy fence to sort of, you know, at least take the sightline out just a little bit for any of the neighbors or anybody passing by. I go and get the campers and bring them, and, you know, and then just do the work there and take it back.
All right, and what's your thoughts on the number, I mean, what are your plans as far as that goes?
So, I do own one, and I think, you know, probably two more on top of that. You know, I'm not trying to load up the yard, sometimes parts are an issue, you know, so having more than one, or at least a few, I can be working on multiple campers at the same time while I'm waiting on parts to come in. So, you know, I would say two to three beside my own, so, you know, three to four total would be, you know, a max, I wouldn't want to go beyond that. So, people start getting angry if you hold them too long anyways, you know, so.
Questions from the board?
So, if we limit it to four or five, would that work when you're?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you would be okay with, like, something specific about that it's not mechanic, and it's not exterior, like, painting and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's easy because I don't do it, so nobody paints outside anyways, so, you know.
And you don't mess with the sewer or anything?
No, no, I don't have to get rid of any type of contaminants or anything like that, anything that would be done would be, you know, everything gets flushed before it comes to me, so I don't have to handle any kind of hazmads or anything like that, so. And I don't do engine work, don't know how, so I don't do any of that either, so.
Do you have any employees to come?
Not right now, you know, at the most, even with where I'm at, it would probably be one at most, but as of right now, like, that's long term, you know. I wouldn't want to have more than one employee, but for now, it's just me, so.
Could I get you to sign in, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do your customers come and visit to see what's going on?
No.
And I'm going to ask a follow-up if I can, if you were to have four, and there was a limitation of four, I know you can't see the map right now, or I think you can, maybe you can on a screen there in front of you. I believe the pin's right in the home right now, if, on the map, the green pin, so is there?
I actually can't see.
Take a step back.
Step back and see, I'm sorry, I should explain that better. If there were four on there, where are the four going to be?
So, the one that you can see right now is my camper, and then I have a shop right there, it's a three bay shop, that's a little bit towards the back of the property that you can't really see right now. So, one or two right there, that would probably be the active ones that I'd be working on. And then I can actually park one behind the house, kind of parallel to the house, that you can't, you couldn't really see if it was back there.
So, you just hit on exactly what I was concerned about, is it not looking like it's all stored in the front yard?
That's right, yeah.
If there's some sort of limitation on it related to that, just to keep it from being four of them lined up straight down Golden, uh, Golden Drive.
Sure.
You can use a setback line from the road back to, you don't want the path a hundred and twenty-five feet.
But you did mention a fence, right?
Yeah, like if.
Is it going to conceal the vehicles?
Yes, yes. So, what I would do, I would come off the front of the house right there, and just come straight across, and so it would conceal everything that's going on in the backyard, so.
Got you, so you would be okay with the condition that it was all behind the front line of the house?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think that's, that would be a good thing.
Any further this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Smith, we may, you'll have a seat, we may have some.
My name is Kathy Barhatek, I live right next door to Eric, and my concern is the decrease in value, what it's going to do to my property. And that's my main concern, and I do have other questions about, you know, where, where these RVs are going to be parked, are they going to be in the front, is there going to be a fence in between my house and his house? What's the future plan, is he going to grow, build buildings to house any of these RVs that he's working in? You know, so those are my concerns.
Yes, ma'am, did, did the, his comments on the fence, did that answer your fence question?
Well, I was confused about where the fence actually is going.
So, I mean, he stated that the, the RVs or the campers would be behind the fence, so he would basically fence them in around where they're parked.
On the side yard, on the side of the yard?
We can get, we can get very specific, but basically, they would be contained in defense.
Can she step back and tell us which side she's on?
She's on the right side, I think.
Where the trees are?
Can you tell us which, which side you're on, the right or the left?
Four fifty-eight.
Four fifty-eight, okay, thank you. We'll, we'll get a specific, specific answer on exactly where the fence is going. As far as constructing more, more buildings, he can't grow under, since he's in a rural business, I mean, Ms. Chelsea, you may want to answer this, but he can't grow any bigger than this size at this point.
Yes, so he would have to come back, if he, once he receives, if he were to receive the rural business, these limitations that are put on tonight, if he wanted to expand, he would have to come back before the board to, to expand, and at that point, the board would then make a recommendation for that, and you would again get notice. So, if he wanted to expand, if he, if he wanted to grow any larger, yes, ma'am?
And, I mean, and I'm not an appraiser, but in my opinion, that, you know, it's not going to affect your property values. I mean, he could, he could own four or five campers and have them parked in his backyard, you know, it wouldn't be any difference. And since this is a very small business because of it being a rural business, I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's going to have to stay small. If he wants to grow it, like she said, he'll have to come back up here and try to change it at that point, but, you know. We try to allow homeowners to, you know, do things in their yard at their, at their house, but there's a lot of rules to try to keep it small.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I do.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
I'm Cheryl Hindley, one oh four Maple Drive, Rankin, just around the corner. And we, when we got our five acres, we had to apply for our permits to get our pond, and we did that. Then we had horses, and we did that. My husband did heating and air conditioning. And it would have been nice if we could have had a heating and air conditioning business there too, but we didn't get that. So, my concern is, when's this going to stop? What's the limit of it? And the privacy, the fence you're talking about, is it a privacy fence or a wire fence?
Privacy fence.
A privacy fence, okay, so, y'all sure you can monitor that?
That's why.
I think it'll get out, I think it'll get out of control. I think it'll get out of control. So, that's, that's my concern.
Well, it's a good point that Brad made and Dave made, code enforcement brought him here today, so somebody saw there was. So, somebody saw there was something wrong and brought it before us.
Yes, but.
Be fixed.
He's been monitored.
Yeah, he's being monitored now.
For now, huh? Well, I'll be on the lookout. I will tell y'all if I see something wrong, okay? I will tell you.
Thank you, Ms. Hindley. Does anyone else wish to speak? Um, do you want some clarifications from Mr. Smith on the fence?
Yeah, I think so.
Uh, Mr. Sm- Mr. Smith, if you could, could you come back to the panel, please? If you would, could you give us some clarifications on exactly the privacy fence?
So, I don't mind making the privacy fence all the way around. I'm okay with that. I, I mean, even just living there at some point, we have a chain link fence that's back there now. The goal at some point is to pull that up and build a privacy fence anyways. And so I don't have a problem with completely, you know, surrounding my backyard with a privacy fence that separates, you know, me from my neighbor and from the road, so that everything on both sides would be contained. On the right side, it's a tree line, so there's really not, you know, you can't really see anything anyway.
And it looks like the back is wooded as well.
It is, yeah, between my neighbor behind me, there's, there's wood line there too as well.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, if you remember on Highway thirty, um, uh, the Crane Company with the rural business, we did the fence in the front, down one side where there were no buffers. And it was up to seven feet to put the trucks behind the, the fence. So that's not a precedent would be, it's, we've done this before, just to give you a heads up on that. For a rural business.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I want to be respectful as I can to the neighborhood and my neighbors and all that stuff too, so.
And I think we gave him ninety days.
So, any additional clarification?
Uh, if, yeah, if I can, just, it is on the fence. Um, so, seven feet, and this may be actually for staff, seven feet is our max that's allowed in the rural, without permitting. Okay, um, then I would, seven's kind of an awkward number if you're cutting every board, so that's kind of crazy, but, um, it needs to, because the things you're doing, it needs to be a little bit, probably as tall as it can be.
Which would be seven feet, right?
Beyond six feet, the typical privacy fence height. Um, we've had this discussion in the past, um, in buffers and fences. I do think this is a good opportunity for fencing that helps address some of the neighbors' needs. There's building the fence, and then there's maintaining the fence, right? In my opinion, there's nothing worse than the unmaintained privacy fence, so just, I don't know how we, again, co-compliance, how we control that, but it needs to be maintained.
Any further? Any further?
I, I do think there's a bunch of conditions we need to.
I'm gonna close public comment, discussion from the board. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Do you have any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just throw out a few conditions that I thought we might, should consider if we do consider approving. If I can share those and anybody can add those if they'd like. Um, the, uh, limit to four RVs or campers, max.
Four including his or four plus his?
I guess that's up to us, as, as long as there's.
Four customers.
Four customers, max, I think was where I would, I would go. Um, I would say a fence around the entirety. I don't know, relying on tree canopy, I, I, not having seen it, I don't feel comfortable knowing that there's enough understory there to protect what the neighbors' concerns were. So, the privacy fence, uh, basically go around the entirety of what the, the rural business yard is. And that fence would go no further forward than the front line of the house, therefore, none of the business activity would go beyond that front line. And I believe the only other one is, he, he offered it up, but it's just not a condition that it's only interior work, no mechanical or, you know, exterior painting, et cetera.
And we, we typically throw in the hours too?
Oh, hours? Um, well, I guess we didn't discuss that.
Daylight hours? I mean, if he's not banging and clinging, I mean, it doesn't really matter. I mean, he could be out there working on his own RV at, you know. Yeah. Alright, can you?
He has customers coming in and out?
That's right.
He doesn't have customers coming in.
Customers, he goes and gets them anyway. Alright, any further discussion?
Yeah, that's the only ones I would.
I'll call for, I'll call for a motion. What a.
Ryan, put that in the form of a motion.
Sure. Alright, um, well, I'll make a motion to approve the, the rural business, uh, application with the, um, staff conditions as well as the following additional conditions, um, that a limit of four RVs or campers that are business-related, plus one for his private, so a total of five. A fence, privacy fence, um, to the maximum height, which I believe is seven feet, around the entirety of the RV or rural business use. That fence should be maintained, but that doesn't necessarily be part of the motion, and only interior work or, or mechanical, no mechanical or painting.
Discussion on the motion. Call for a second. Second, Mr. Higgins, all is in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. And this will go before the Board of Commissioners on February the sixth. Item number two, let's see. Do you want to go ahead and handle here?
Yeah, I guess I do need to. So I, I need to request a vote of the board to allow me to recuse myself from items two and three.
So it's been brought to my attention that, um, under rubbers, this order, we have to vote to allow someone to be recused. So, um, need a motion to, motion to recuse. Ryan, from items number two and three.
From, Ryan, from items two and three.
Alright.
Second.
Second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried by all. Alright. So item two of the public hearing for Hallie Myers, his agent for Blue Sky Acres Incorporated, requests a conditional use for an agritourism business located at seven twenty-nine Ardmore Oaky Road. This is the third district. Ms. Chelsea, and, and I know we have items two and three, um, item three is a buffer reduction, is a variance. So, I mean, obviously these separate motions, but we can discuss together.
Yes, sir. So, um, at the November seventh Board of Commissioners meeting, um, the board did approve the agritourism ordinance. Um, this application, um, is a conditional use, uh, within a conforming AR one zoning district. Uh, the applicant would like to expand, um, in the future to include a workshop, a classroom, and a covered arena, which you can see there, uh, on your screen. Uh, the arena, once built, will be placed in the middle of the property. It is, uh, five hundred feet from the road and three hundred and fifty feet from the property lines. Uh, the applicant has also provided a concept plan and business narrative, uh, for the agritourism business. Uh, for the conditional use, staff is recommending alternative number one. Uh, we can talk about the variance now if you would also like.
Sure.
Um, so for the variance, uh, the applicant is requesting, um, the variance for the buffers, um, from the requirements within the Effingham County ordinance. Uh, planting a buffer within certain sections of this property would take away from the rural aesthetics of the area. Um, along the northeastern boundary, the applicant would like to, uh, reduce the buffer to zero feet. Um, as you can see, um, and let me see if I can get my mouse here, here we go. Um, along this, uh, buffer line here, there is a fence. Um, me and the applicant did have a, or the applicant and I should say, had a discussion. Um, there is a fence along this area, um, that keeps the, uh, the horses in this pasture, there's cattle in this pasture, so, um, they, there will be no mingling, if you will. Um, so, and then along the southwestern boundary, uh, these trees here, there's about approximately twenty feet of trees. So this would also be a, uh, a buffer reduction to zero feet. Um, and then, of course, let's take a look. Um, here, the, there's about three hundred feet of trees already planted. Um, they do not plan to timber, uh, this area here, so they're not asking for a reduction in this buffer here at all. Um, along the road frontage, uh, this would be, um, a ten-foot landscape buffer, um, simply because when they do grow into that, uh, that large arena that they would like to place, um, in the middle of the property, they will need that, uh, ten-foot landscape buffer. So that is the variance, um, that is the request. Uh, for the variance, staff is recommending alternative number one.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you. Um, again, thank you to the planning staff for all your help. Y'all have been awesome in walking us through this process. Um, we applied for the conditional use, um, permit for this. Um, eh, we actually have applied for the rural business, um, permit last year. And under that, um, we only get limited to a thousand square foot of, um, business space that we can have. We are a five oh-one C three nonprofit, so we serve people with disabilities. Um, the workshop is a workshop for, um, employing people with disabilities. They're gonna build agricultural products in there. And then we also have the covered arena is for equine assisted activities for people with disabilities and those in foster care. So our, um, plan is to keep it, um, primarily agricultural. Um, we'll have the hay fields in the front of the property, as you can see, and then also the, um, gardens in the back. And then, um, keeping it to equine uses. So, um, it, it's gonna be very much focused on agriculture. Even the office space, as you can see, is um, gonna have classroom space included in that and, um, with an agricultural focus. So, um, this is our big dream. This is not gonna happen overnight. Um, but our hope is that it would benefit the community and, um, those who are in need of it. So, um, thank you, and please feel free to ask any questions.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Can I ask you to state your name?
Yes, Hallie Myers.
Thank you. Um, questions?
Yeah, Ms. Myers, the, the property, uh, to the right of that, in that picture there, that the cattle field is, is that part of your property as well?
The cattle field is not, so it, they actually have a, um, there, there's a fence, um, running along that side. And we will do, um, on top of it, we'll have our fencing for our horses, um, which will be probably a ten-foot, um, from their property line, so to give a, a nice buffer around the outside of the, the property.
I was just thinking of, um, future growth of that property over there. What if somebody sells it and they want to put a a house on there, a subdivision or something? Now, all of a sudden, the buffers are, between the property lines is, because you're trying to get a zero buffer on that side.
Okay, um, my thought prob- well, I, I know, I, I've had conversations with the neighbor on that side, um, and she, she has mentioned she doesn't have a problem with us being there. Um, I'm happy to.
Gonna be the owner.
Right, right, um.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may help with that question, um, so if that person were to sell and say subdivide and that was approved, they too would then have to adhere to, to a buffer requirement. Um, and for residential to, um, an AR one property, um, which is what, um, Ms. Myers' property is. Um, so they would again have to adhere to at least a thirty-foot buffer. Um, and if nothing is planted, uh, for their side, they would then have to replant that buffer, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And if she's set off ten feet, and it's.
And all that was proposed over there is what, a hay field and a?
Right.
Pasture.
Right.
Is that gonna be a full-time pasture?
Um, rotational, so we would, we would be moving. And, and right now, we're keeping the pasture on the other side, so that's a, um, probably five, ten years down the road.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? There's no further discussion from the board. We're voting on a conditional use for an agritourism business. I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I closed the public hearing.
Make a motion to approve with all staff recommendation.
Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item number three, um, we have discussed, is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? I'll close public comment. Um, discussion from the board. Call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all is in favor? Motion carried by all. Now, I need a vote to.
Bring him back to the table.
Bring Mr. Thompson back.
Make a motion to bring Ryan back into the meeting here.
Is there a second? I'll second. All is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item number four. Mitchell Donaldson requests a variance from ordn- ordinance section three point four point one to allow for a reduction in required buffers located at three forty-four Standard Lane. This is zoned I one, uh, Ms. Chelsea?
So the applicant has requested a variance due to the size of the lot and the required buffers needed between residentially zoned parcels and industrial zone parcels. Um, the parcel itself is approximately three hundred and eighty-eight feet by three hundred and thirty-six feet. Um, per the ordinance, the applicant would need a minimum of three hundred feet, uh, for the undeserved buffer. Uh, due to our current changes in the subdivision ordinance, it states, um, at no, at no time may buffers be reduced between commercial, institutional, or industrial, um, and residential uses. Um, due to that, um, staff has to recommend alternative number two.
Is there a representative here tonight for Mr. Donaldson? Yes, sir.
Hello, uh, my name's Mitchell Donaldson.
Alright, so you tell us a little bit about what you got going on.
Yeah, so, um, I was kind of interested, I'd never heard the, the latter part of what she said, but, um, but in any event, you know, the, the scope of it is, it's a industrial piece of property, I believe, since nineteen eighty-nine. Um, prior to the, you know, buffer restrictions. Um, with, uh, you know, obviously with the nature of what I'm doing over there, it's considered, I, I guess, I'm in Scriven County under C four or something like that, but, um, you know, provisional, you know, options are given oftentimes, but in, in any event, it's an industrial piece of property. I'd like to use it for industrial purposes. And, uh, given the current setbacks, um, it would render the property useless. Um, the, the property, the, the building is, is sitting in pretty close proximity to the, to the right side of the property anyway. Um, I'm not looking to do, uh, any structures or buildings or anything of that nature. Um, I'm a, uh, uh, what I like to call a, a raw materials consolidation site. So I provide raw materials for foundries and mills to be able to turn our, you know, res- uh, old metal items into new products. Um, and, um, you know, I have a facility in Scriven, Buford, Hardyville. And, um, Springfield is just kind of a strategically, uh, convenient location. Most of our business is, um, um, industrial or, or commercial businesses, plumbers, HVAC companies. Um, and it's just a good strategic point to drop, roll off containers, you know, we're not a, a trash company. Like I said, we're a, a raw materials consolidation site, for lack of a better terms.
So can you def- can you elaborate, elaborate on that a little bit? I mean, obviously, it's a heavy, heavily residential area, so.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're meaning when you say that?
So what we do is, well, you know, we set a bin up at somebody's house and they throw their refrigerator washer and dryer in there. And we bring it, we weigh it, we dump it, and then we load it up into a trailer and off it goes. Um, it's not a, it's not a, a, a holding facility, so to speak, it's more of a transfer yard. So it's material in, material out. Um, we do have a, um, a warehouse. You know, it's not very big, there's not gonna be a whole lot of activity, but I live in Effingham County. And, um, I'd, you know, like to stay at my business in my county and just kind of stay here and sit by the phone and answer phones and, and, uh, help people rec- recycle their, you know, copper wires. And, um, we have a processing facility in, in Hardyville where we process copper and separating the plastic and the insulation. So, it's, uh, it's in an industrial park area, we're a bit more industrialized in that area. But for lack of a better terms, we're just more of a transfer yard, a consolidation site. And for me to set my containers, you know, if I'm going to pick up a bin, you know, and, and, you know, Elabel, it's nice to be able to pick up one of my containers that are sitting at my yard in Springfield and hit up a couple of the locations in the county, so.
Any additional questions or comments at this time?
No shredding of the metal or anything?
No, no processing, no, you know, yeah, it's just, you know.
Yeah, I do have a question if I can. Um, so what is your request? Zero?
Um, no, I don't, I don't mind having a buffer. Right now, it's just like, eesh, you can't do anything out there. You, you, you don't have a, a buffer. Um, you know, it's an industrial property and you gotta be three hundred feet from a residence. I don't, I don't, you know, I don't mind, you know, g- uh, leaving a buffer. Um, you know, I think three hundred feet for what we're doing is, is a bit excessive. Um, so, um, you know, we plan on redoing the fence. Um, you know, relocating the power lines. I've already paid the money to get them relocated 'cause the, the power lines that are on the property are really just for the folks behind us. And, uh, so I'm just trying to shift those power lines over to the, to the left side of the property. And, um, you know, we're gonna redo the fence, but before, you know, it's gonna be a fortune for me to put fencing around that, that property. And so before I went ahead and did that, I wanted to make sure that it was gonna be up to snuff and up to par for everyone. Um, you know, it, it, it won't be see, you know, I'll make it to where it's not see-through, you know, and, um.
I mean, it sounds to me like your business makes some noise.
It depends. Um, you know, between the hours of, you know, nine and three, maybe. Um, really, the only noise it would be making is an excavator walking back and to, you know. Um, the stuff in the building, there won't be anything loud enough to cause any, you know, concerns or issues. Um, we're not gonna be using saws, awls. Um, you know, we're not gonna be, uh, using, you know, big saws or cutting, you know, uh, equipment over there. Um, so short of a, a, no different, it, it wouldn't make any more of a noise than, than a lawnmower cutting the grass in somebody's yard.
All right, sir.
What was that property being used for in nineteen eighty-nine when it was made industrial? What were they doing there?
Uh, you know, I'm not really sure. I, I, I think the last fellow there was a mobile home repair company. Um, but, uh, you know. Oh, as a matter of fact, there is a, a Gichi Services. They were running a company out of there now. It was a contract and com- commercial, not industrial, but.
So do you currently own it?
The property, yeah.
All right, so we may have some more questions for you in a moment.
I'm sure. I hold up shield.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, sir.
How you all doing?
Good evening.
My name's Robert Coop, and I live exactly behind that. The, the, they land and my land is joined together. And, you know, I walk out my backyard. I don't wanna see nothing like that. No old refrigerator stoves and stuff like that, you know, it's a hazard. And, uh, the traffic, when the school get out, that's gonna be a problem there too. Because of that business, you know, 'cause it runs off us down the lane. And the trucks there parking now, you can hardly see nothing. When you pull out there, you know, to make a left on Standard Lane. And, uh, I don't want it there. No, they need to go somewhere else with that. Because they wasn't no, ain't no business there now. Ain't been no business there for years. And there was a mobile home place that sold mobile home parts, parts some years, years ago. Ain't no business there now. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coop.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, how you doing?
Good evening.
I'm Wade McCollum. I'm a resident of the neighborhood, and, uh, we also have our church there on, uh, Church Road, uh, adjacent to that. My concern is the children and the school buses that travel those roads in the afternoon. When he said three o'clock, we start, school buses start traveling that road about two o'clock in the afternoon. Also, the parents there to pick up their kids. And I'm, I'm really concerned about different trucks coming in and out of that facility.
All right, sir.
Haven't had a lot of activity in a long time, so this kinda surprised me when I heard that they was planning to put a recycling, uh, facility there. And this is Jason too, a lot of folks in that neighborhood that's really concerned about it.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, my name is Shay Smith, and I own the property to the back of it. I have some rental mobile homes there. Um, I'm concerned with the noise. I know he says like a lawnmower, but, I mean, nobody wants to hear a lawnmower. Six hours a day without many breaks. Um, and there's elderly people that live back there that don't work between the hours of nine and three. And also the traffic, I mean, coming in and out of there. It is very rural. Um, but I have the homes that would be the backer, the buffer on the back of the property.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? I'll close public comment, um, discussion from the board. Mr. Chair, can you bring him up? We got a couple more questions we need answered, please.
Could you come back to the podium, please?
So the, um, refrigerators, things like that, that contain the hazardous chemicals, chlorofour, corb- carbons, um, what do you do with those?
They get reclaimed.
Okay, reclaimed.
It's no different than an HVAC. As a matter of fact, it's significantly less.
Less, right. And you, you don't allow any customers on the site, do you?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Customers, people, individuals can bring their, their refrigerators and such, stuff like that, yeah. Um, but, um-
So you would just keep a twenty cubic yard dumpster there and they could just come and throw it in? Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
When a big, um, delivery or however you want to term it, um, if you've got something coming from somebody recycling a lot, that's what I jot it down. I didn't really hear recycling, but that's what goes off in my head.
That's right.
Um, what is that coming in on? What size truck? How often?
So we just put, um, a DOT size, you know, driveway in, in, in reference to the, the semi trucks. The ones that are a problem over there now has nothing to do with me. Uh, matter of fact, I spent thirty-eight thousand dollars putting a concrete driveway in front of my business because the semi trucks wouldn't quit parking in it. You know, put a sign up, tow them away, but I'm not gonna create undue hardship for a man trying to make a living. So I wasn't gonna have them, their trucks towed, so I just spent the money to put, you know, a concrete pad to, uh, um, go from the driveway to, to the property. Um, you know, now if there's, you know, this business is not exactly, um, you know, rocket science. I mean, if, if something comes in big, we just send it to another location. That's the beauty about me having so many locations. But the, the, the primary thing I need this location for is to just drop my own personal bins. So, um, you know, but as far as traffic, you know, I mean, I think in Hardyville, we, we wait on thirty customers, thirty-five customers a day. Uh, maybe only three of them are semi trucks, you know? Um, the, the roll-off truck that would be coming in there most frequently is, um, a six axle truck. So no different from the trash truck that goes through the, the, this area, you know, twice a day around the same time that the bus schedules are coming through in the morning or in the afternoon. So, um-
That happens once a week?
Well, it depends on where you're at, you know, but, um. But, yeah. I mean, the, the property's industrial, you know? I mean, a- all, all, um, you know, I didn't zone it industrial, you know? It was already zoned industrial, but, you know, I understand the concerns about the buffers and the residents. And, and I don't mind, uh, being accommodating.
All right, sir. Any additional questions? All right, sir, thank you. Um, discussion from the board. I mean, I, I mean, I'll say, um, it i- it is an industrially zoned parcel. Um, and, and I'm sorry, you know, for me personally, that he bought it, um, not know, without knowing about the buffers. But, um, that is also the reason why we implemented these buffers to protect. I mean, when you look at it on the map, it's three acres in the middle of a huge residential area. You know, and it's hard to, so, um, it's hard to limit, um, sound and everything else. I mean, so, you know, I would, you know, I, that's just, I don't know, this tough, it's, it's very hard.
Yeah, I mean, it is. I mean, we've recognized there's challenges to that. The buffers are there for a reason. Um, we've debated what heavy industrial is often and included things that are a lot less intense than this in heavy industrial. A recycling facility can be pretty intensely industrial. Um, I know it's already zoned. I, I, it's, it's, it's an absolute challenge. Um, the reason I asked the question, I asked about what the request was. I mean, I see a sketch that was pen drawing on an aerial.
Right.
But that's not enough guarantees of what's being planned for me to feel comfortable, uh, with a buffer reduction.
Yeah, I mean, this is classic case of non-conforming law. I mean, so, uh, yes, sir, Mr. Donaldson, if you wish to, if you have-
Yeah, yeah, if you don't mind. Well, you know, it, it's one of those things, it's, the buffer is for commercial, right? Or, or obviously not as significant. So if I wanted to put an auto body shop or a diesel ch- uh, repair shop, we'd have just as many trucks coming in there and it's not considered industrial. So, um-
But that's, that's also assuming that it's allowed.
So you, you, okay.
I mean, you would have to change it to commercial ways, you know?
So it's industrial and I'd have to downgrade it to commercial?
If, if you wish to be in commercial, then you're gonna have to rezone it to a commercial zoning, yes.
Was my suggestion, because the buffers are gonna be the buffers there.
So that, I mean, no guarantees that that'll happen either, you know, um, so.
So I ju- I, just to clarify, 'cause it's also confusing. So pardon me if I sound disrespectful. You know, I, I sure hope I'm not, but I have an industrial property and you can't use it. Because these buffers were put into place later. I, it's, I, I'm just stating the obvious, and I just wanna make sure I'm standing-
And that's what I said. It's very tough for you because you didn't know the rules. This is a non-conforming industrial parcel.
Right.
Um, that was zoned a long time ago, um, before the county realized, you know, I mean, I, I guarantee all these homes weren't around it. Um, and so the use it was being used for probably wasn't hurting the neighbors, you know, um. So it was kinda part of the community, but now, you know, it's still there and, you know.
It, it looks like there's one house on three fourteen. Um, you know, that's on the right side. Okay, um, there's one house here on the right.
Yes, sir, we, I mean-
For the other side, you know, there's, you know, um-
So, um, anyway, we've-
Yeah, it's fine.
Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, and then we ha- and we have it voted. I mean, we don't know how the vote's gonna turn out.
I'm just making sure I understand it, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from the board? I'll call for a motion. I'll make a motion to deny. Motion for denial, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, I was in favor of denial. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. So this still does go to the county commissioners on, on February the sixth. Um, you know, my advice would be come up with a very specific plan of what you're willing or plan to do as far as your buffers. So, and they may, and, and they, they may have a different opinion.
Is, I, I notice some people get suggestions often. Is there any, um, possibility of getting some suggestions made from the-
I mean, I, I would meet with staff.
Cool, awesome. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Item number five. Here's a public hearing for Jamin Jones, his agent for Perez Everado Baca, request to rezone plus or minus seventeen and a half acres from AR one to I one to allow for a concrete plant loaded at twenty-three eighty-eight US Highway eighty, first district. Uh, Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So, um, the applicant is proposing to rezone to I one to develop a ready-mix concrete facility. Um, ready-mix concrete facilities are permitted within light industrial. Um, light industrial does allow for buffers between agricultural residentially zoned parcels to be a hundred and fifty feet, which is what the applicant, the applicant has proposed. Um, staff has also, um, recommended that a sketch plan be required, um, along with this application. Um, staff is recommending alternative number one. And let me restate that, um, the recommendation for the sketch plan, um, is with, uh, the rezoning. So a sketch plan for this is not heard tonight.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there a representative, um, Mr. Jones?
Good evening. My name is Ashley Scott Burns. I'm with Coastal Engineering Consulting. I'm the engineer for the project. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, sir. Thank you. Questions, comments at this time?
Yeah, I guess I've got a few, as always, huh? Um, so I see there's a pretty specific plan that was submitted for the buffers.
Yes.
And I, I'm gonna step back so you can see what the question I'm about to ask. Um, the property line there on the bottom left-hand side shows a bigger area than what shows on the planting buffer. Is there a reason for that?
When we met with TRC, we discussed that that portion of the property is actually Zoned B three. So that requires a fifty-foot buffer instead of the one hundred and fifty-foot. So in that area where we're right there on that angle, we're a hundred, we had only a fifty-feet buffer required because that property is already zoned business. The re- the remaining of the property, um, everything else is residential. Now directly to the north, it's actually already I one property. So we're showing a hundred and fifty bu- foot buffer, but that may not be necessary because it's already zoned I one across the street to the north.
And the existing condition of this property, if I remember correctly, is pretty much a wide open field, correct?
Yes.
So what's the buffer gonna be?
The buffer's gonna be one hundred and fifty around the portion to the, uh-
Oh, I'll go back for you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's no problem. The portion to the, uh, I guess the southwest, that corner, is already Zoned B three.
Yes, sir.
And so that portion will only be fifty foot is required. We already, we provided a conceptual landscaping plan with the buffer. And that's why you're seeing the fifty foot there because that was after our discussion with TRC.
But, so what happened, three hundred feet?
Because, uh, staff can answer that, but I think it's because of the ag adjacent zoning and not resi- uh, residential neighborhood.
So it's I one to, so how did it reduce from three hundred down?
So when, when industrial is within the ordinance, when it is light industrial, which is what ready-mix concrete facilities fall under, um, and it is buffered to agricultural residential, it is a hundred and fifty foot. Um, if it is buffered to residential being R one or R three or R four, uh, that is where you find your three hundred foot. Um, per the buffer ordinance, um, and I do have that. If you need to see it, um, I can also pull it up for you as well. Um, so it is, although it is industrial, um, it is also light industrial and heavy industrial. This use within our ordinance does fall in that light industrial use.
So what is the requirements for creating a buffer? 'Cause this is a field.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, I mean, it's gonna have to be some heavily, but, I mean, it's, so there has to be requirements of what the buffer will look like.
Absolutely. Let me look that up for you.
We have provided a conceptual landscaping plan as a part of it. Um, and basically what we have done is we have a mix of your canopy trees, your understory, and we have that around the, the length of the property based off of the current ordinance that is, uh, available in Minnesota code. We have it, uh, we brought on the landscape architect early just to get a conceptual drawing for the landscaping plan.
Gotcha. I see it now, I'm sorry. I didn't go far enough.
Show me where the, uh, B three is on that property. I'm trying to understand.
It's adjoining the B three.
Oh, it's adjoining a B three.
See that small section there at the southwest corner?
That little flat section there?
A little flat spot there?
No, the other one on the other side, that little flat angle. On the blue line.
Yeah, there you go. See, see the blue up on the screen?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a very big, it's the lumber area, right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
So the ordinance says where trees do not already exist, they must be planted at a rate of one tree at least two inches. Uh, every- every fifteen linear feet of buffer. And then we do within our ordinance have our acceptable trees that are allowed.
But there's more to that standard for industrial, correct?
Um, it says buffers in industrial zones must include understory plantings at a rate of on three gallon plant every five linear feet if sufficient understory foliage does not exist.
And that's where we bring in the Eli Agnes.
There should be, I believe it's the larger trees for every thirty foot as well, based off of the, it may be canopy trees every thirty foot. But we, like I said, we contracted a landscape architect to make sure that we showed the buffer. Now, there are some trees on the on, I guess, the northwest portion of the property that we may be able to retain, but until we get the full tree survey, you know, we're showing the best that we can as far as just getting some, getting the necessary canopy.
Yes, sir. And to speak to what you were saying, for buffers greater than thirty feet in depth, required tree planting must come from the large tree list.
Okay, another question or two if I can. So the site plan that was included, it only shows a bit of, I guess, development. I'll say there's a few buildings and things related to the ready mix plant. What happens in all the area that's outside the parking and the paving that's between the buffer, basically the rest of the open space? What's, what does that look like?
As of right now, there's no plan for it. So as of right now, basically, that's going to be outside of the this project. We're only looking at the roughly three, four acres that we're showing. I don't, and as of right now, they haven't came with any plan on moving forward with that piece, but it's just focusing on this is all that we discuss at the moment.
And we're discussing zoning, correct?
Correct.
Zoning.
Yes.
So the use could change.
Yes.
Buffers could change.
Yes.
Right? So just want to bring that up, that the use being proposed may be a hundred and fifty feet. A different use may be bigger underneath that industrial zoning.
Which is why the sketch plan is very important.
All right, we may have some more questions if you in a moment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
Hello, my name is Melissa Still.
Good evening.
We live, hello again. We live on George Road, and that is directly across from the end of our road.
Into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. That is directly in front of the end of our road. And as of right now, yes, you're right, correct. It is a big open field. So I know that there's a concrete company down the street. It's very covered up. It's at the end of Meldrum Road. But right there is where it's still two-lane highway. There's a lot of residential. It bumps up on the south side. There's residential there, residential on the other side. And then, of course, all of us that are across the street and down Highway eighty. Very congested. You know, not know, not seeing the sketch plan, of course, you you don't know how it's going to be light out, but that is open to interpretation later on when that sketch plan comes out. It's still two lane and it's it's still very, very congested. And I mean, residents are all over the place right there. So that's one of the things that we're very concerned with is the safety of everyone in that area as well. So thank you for your time.
And right across the street, aren't they building a warehouse project over there?
Yes, y'all approved that earlier, about six years or six months ago, I think.
That coming along, is it?
It hasn't been sold yet. I believe it's under contract. It's the last thing that I heard. But nothing.
Developed.
Correct. That I've seen.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Still.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Kathy Sheffield. I live right next door to this piece of property.
Left side or right side?
Going towards Pooler. I'm on the left side. Okay, is that little blue spot that you're seeing is B three? Is that on my property?
No.
Okay, because there is an acre of my property that's commercial, that my husband died sixteen years ago. Zip. Nothing's there. It's a storage unit. Okay. One thing I want to know, lights at night? What are the hours? What about getting in and out? I know when the property starts across the street where they do the warehouse, they have to have a turning lane. You can't stop the flow of traffic on Highway eighty with trucks trying to make a left-hand turn into those warehouses. The other thing, is concrete gonna be brought there for any crushing? We gotta remember silica, okay? That's very deadly. We have children that live right in this this silica. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it. Maybe you are. It just flows in the air. It covers the trees, everything. I want to know about that. I want to know what their hours are. And I want to know that those hours are gonna stay what they are, not like what's happened in the past, like the chipping mill behind me and it runs all night long. But is is this gonna be an area where they bring, like a warehouse has, oh, we made a boom, boom, we gotta cut these big blocks out and they're returned to the concrete. And from what I understand, they're turned into crushed run. Okay? So that again is silica that is put into the air. But my main thing is, I have to back up my neighbor here, the traffic on that road. You cannot get out now. I don't know what the state's gonna do. We haven't seen anybody there marking anything, taking pictures. They're gonna have to make a turn lane. That's gonna have to happen. So otherwise, how they gonna come going east? How are they gonna get into that warehouse? So nothing actually has happened over there yet, still woods. But there's there's some deep concerns for a concrete plant to be here. Buffer or no buffers, all right? And I don't want to really drive and come to my beautiful home, the beautiful home next to me and the one next to me and look at a concrete plant. So is that buffer gonna be in the front of the property also? That does make me a little bit happier, but I am concerned about the hours, the lights, and what do concrete trucks do when they back up? They beat continuously. So there's a noise problem, too. And there's not that much, it used to belong to Ashley Hatcher. There's not that much between us. We can actually see that hole that's still back there. And the concrete trucks are currently parked on that property. No, no business is going on. They're just parked there. But I do have some real concerns here. All right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Either in favor or against? Yes, sir.
Dennis Hales also, I live on George Road, halfway down it. I still work. I'm seventy-two, but I still work and we work around concrete a lot. And I talked to a guy this morning because we're doing a plant at three oh one in I sixteen. And we supposed to pour concrete yesterday and the rain messed that up. And I asked him what the average time pouring it, and Kathy was asking a while ago. Usually we start about two AM in the morning and it'll it'll go right on through finishing until no telling, maybe eight, nine, ten o'clock. And and those things also have backup alarms on those as well as these trucks are gonna have. So that's gonna be a bad thing. And like she said a while ago, I was raised in Meldrum and where you come out there, there's a concrete plant that you really don't even hardly know is there. It, when you go by, you can see some lights. I go by it about six o'clock in the morning. And every now and then a truck would come out, but it's and it's got the natural wood that separate it from the from them there. All you got is the trucks coming down the road. So this place is an open field when you get to the end of our road. And like she mentioned, too, and this guy I talked to this morning, the first thing he said was the silica. And I've worked around silica a lot of my life with masons and doing electrical work. And and I have issues from it. And a lot of guys my age did. They they used to not wet cut and we breathed a lot of that mess and it it it's bad. And other than that, I'd see if I wrote anything else down here. It's just a noise and there's, to me, there's no need for another cement plant right there. And for them to just try to get across the road to even pour that warehouse would be a be a nightmare. You know, they're trying to pull out, stop and go right back in again. But anyway, that's that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Hales.
Did you sign the sheet, please?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes to speak? All right, closed public comment. Any questions?
How many lanes is US eighty right there?
Two.
Two lanes?
Yeah, it's come. There's a state route. I mean, any access point will have to be permitted through G dot and controlled by G dot.
Yes, state route, but it's also a US highway, right?
Yeah.
But if they widen it, the way they set up right now, they'll be buying in front of his property.
I don't know. This is the second or third time this parcel's been up here and I mean, I guess it's the chip mill, you know, back there brings in the I one zoning, you know. It's a federal highway. But, you know, and we are talking about a concrete plant tonight, but, you know, we're all, but we're talking about I one zoning, correct?
Right, that's exactly where I was trying to go with that. Like, unless we condition it to only be in the concrete plant, is anything that's allowed in I one. Right?
That's correct.
And I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with that. I was actually a little surprised that the concrete plant was considered a less intense use than the warehouses.
Do you think the intent purpose of that ready mix is to be available for that project across the street? No, not just.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'm, to be honest, I'm that's what's proposed, but and I'm not saying that's not what the plan is, but again, unless we want to condition it to only be in that, which I don't think I would want to do that, we don't know that that's what it's gonna be, right? Long term, but it could be for, you know, a stated period of time, but.
It's always been tough with this property because it's a field and it's so open and buffers have to be created. And how long does that take, you know?
Yeah, I mean, that's when I think you're asking about the buffers, I mean, I have berms. And this is one to me where even if the code doesn't allow it, maybe we consider additional conditions if we are going to consider rezoning it to requiring beyond just a planted buffer because it is a substantial amount of plantings that they're showing, but without something else, it's going to take quite some time to actually buffer it. And if there's a noise concern in particular along Highway eighty's frontage, I thought the points about the other existing facility that's similar to this, it is behind a natural wood line that you don't really know much that they're back there. So something that protects as much as possible that Highway eighty aesthetic and corridor through there without it being a wide open field, I think we need to consider, again, if we are willing to consider it.
And also if it is considered, I mean, I do agree that this has got to have some, you know, being where it is, it's got to have some limitations on hours of operation. And I don't know if that's gonna fly with the applicant either, but I mean, that's just, you know, I don't think this is a twenty-four seven business personally.
I'll speak on that. Just to give some information, the conversation that I had was they were looking at beginning and this is preparing for the day, starting to load up trucks. And I know he mentioned two AM and this is much better, but it's five AM to five PM are the hours. There may, of course, be some time that, or it's outside, but it's not your typical hours. Your typical hour is gonna be five AM to five PM. Basically, the first couple of hours would be preparing and loading up the truck. The last couple of hours would be cleanup. They're planning no more than twenty company vehicles total. That includes your mixers, that includes everything, your your dump trucks, your mixers. So they're gonna have no more than twenty employees and twenty company trucks on site. So it's not gonna be, you know, of course, they maybe make two or three trips per day, just depending on carrying the load. But it's not gonna be, it's gonna be, like I said, no more than than twenty total trucks. So you're looking at ten, fifteen at the most dump trucks going out with the loaders, the mixers, everything else on site.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, while he's up there, can I ask a question? Just for clarification, what goes into the mixture of concrete that you're gonna use?
Well, I'm not the actual, I'm I'm working on behalf of the client, but so I'm I'm not quite sure what's going fully into their ready mix. I'm just the engineer on their behalf. They weren't, he was out of town. He wasn't able to make it in today, so unfortunately, I can't fully, I don't want to put words in his mouth and answer that question for him. But I can make sure to get that information so that at the city council meeting, we can, if he's not here, I'll have that information.
He can send it to Chelsea, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I remember, I mean, this one of the last times it came up, I remember there was a boat sales place and for whatever reason, our ordinance required boat sales to be in I one. So, you know, that was, would have probably been a much more fitting use for this property, but being it was I one, you know, it kind of, it didn't go. Of course, the property across the road, I believe, got denied to start with because of the use that was going over there and then settled in on the warehouses with the berm and the buffer. So, you know, I continue to stand that this being a field really hurts this parcel from being industrial, in my opinion.
Any further discussion?
Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
A motion for denial. Is there a second?
I will.
Second. I was in favor of denial. Any opposed? Motion carries three to one. Once again, this moves to the county commissioners as a recommendation for denial. Thank y'all. Where are we at? Michael, number six, the item, Michael Redman is agent for Wanel Redman, request to rezone one point zero one of eight point eight three acres from I one to I two to allow for subdivision for a new home site located at five fifteen Goshen Road.
Yes, sir. So the applicant has requested to rezone to create a new home site. In doing that, the new home site is less than five acres. So the applicant is requesting that that new home site is rezone to AR two. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Like she stated, I'm requesting to have rezone to AR two to allow me to put a home behind my mom's house on Goshen Road. There's approximately a five-acre field there now. Almost nine acres in a whole piece of property. And that's what the use will be for, be for a single-family home to go behind her house.
Can I get you to state your name?
Mike Redman.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? No discussion from the board. I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I was in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by, thank you, Mr. Redman.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item seven is a public hearing for James Dashers. Wait a minute, you got abstain? I need a vote to allow Mr. Thompson to abstain.
Recuse.
Recuse. Recuse.
Make a motion to recuse, Ryan.
Motion item seven.
There's a second?
Second.
Second. I was in favor. All right, go. Item number seven, James Dashers' agent for Peggy Ann Boykin Beck, request to rezone one hundred and sixteen acres from PD to PD to allow for the amendment of a planned development located on Earl Lane Road and Hodgville Road, the second district. Ms. Ferdinand?
Yes, sir. So the original PD residential zoning was approved in January of twenty twenty-three. Staff and the applicant met in December to discuss the PD text amendments. The new amendments do include approximately new twenty new lots with rear-loading access along Earl Lane Road. Along with that, staff is recommending alternative number one.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. First of all, good to see everyone. Happy New Year. And the portal access is excellent addition to the county. It's
Thank you, sir.
So easy and efficient, so good to use. I appreciate you guys doing that. It's excellent. As Ms. Chelsea said, we, I hear when we did our original approval for zoning, we had not completed the wetlands, but after our zoning, we were, we did the wetlands and we were fortunately favorable to have some uplands to come back. So we were able to add an additional twenty lots. And we're, we don't lose any of the required green space. We actually exceed that. And we're very grateful for the staff to recommend approval and I'm here to answer any questions. And we're very grateful for the staff to recommend approval and I'm here to answer any questions and also have an engineer here with you, Michael Hughes, if you have any engineering questions for him. I am gonna ask Mike to step forward.
Can I get you, Mr. Dasher? Since it's already noted, could I get you to state your name for the record, please?
James Dasher.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mike Hughes with Thompson and Cotton. I am the engineer of record for the project. And there is a motion in front of you, a recommendation. I did want to point out two things. Number one, there was a reference to the flood protection ordinance and that's because this site is located in a Zone A. And when you do a development, I believe it's more than five acres or 30 lots as the threshold, you have to do a flood study. So we have done a few of flood study for the site. As Mr. Dasher said, we've also done a wetland delineation, gotten the court to sign off on that and have a nationwide wetland permit impact. So we're fine with meeting the flood protection ordinance requirements. We've got that flood study done. There were two other elements. One was it asked that a plan, a sketch plan go in front of the county. We would respectfully ask that this be considered the sketch plan. Obviously, if we deviate from the plan, and I don't know if there's been the ability to show what was approved, so everyone can understand how little the two plans have changed, that really it is along Earl Lane Road, a little bit of stretch of, of area we had thought would be wetland, ended up coming back as upland, but the plans are pretty well the same. Open space, again, for a buildable open space area, were larger than we were previously. But we would ask, as long as we don't deviate from the road alignments and the configuration and the projected open space, that we avoid going to a sketch plan approval because this is what we would be submitting for a sketch plan. And then the only other thing I'd ask for consideration of is when we went in front of the county a year ago, the buffers were a critical item, so they vetted the buffers pretty thoroughly. I think there was a recommendation that the buffers be based on new ordinance standards, but I think we have a buffer standard. I don't know the difference between the two, but we've already had it designed by our landscape architect team, so. And then lastly, again, we're doing lane fed on Earl Lane Road, mostly because we don't want to see driveway cuts. We think this is a potential good connection. It is a county road and we'd like to eliminate driveway cuts within that road corridor. So that's why those lots are going to be lane fed to keep driveway cuts off of that roadway. And happy to answer any questions, anyone has.
Mr. Chair, so just to point out, I do not have a picture in our PowerPoint of the previous approved PD, but these lots right here is the new ones that are, that were currently added, so just so you are aware, along Earl Lane Road. So that is what was added, so that you are aware.
And, and those are alleyways, the two white lines behind them?
Yes, right here.
They're called rear-loaded lots, that's the reason why you see them like that.
Sorry, I meant to clarify that terminology. The, the only, there are other little tiny changes. We, you know, we did turn one roadway that was a dead end towards Hodgeville Road and that is to allow utility connections and emergency vehicles. It is specifically the, the county specifically asked that we make sure it is not a secondary access and it will not be used for residents, only for emergency vehicles, so.
That's a nice, that's a nice addition.
Yep.
To get the emergency vehicle in there.
But yes, the note was specifically added as recommended by the county, that this isn't primary access, there should be a single primary access. And that this is only in case there's, there's a blockage on the road or an emergency.
How's access restricted?
It's a great question. I...
Probably gonna be a gate, probably with a key. Fire department has the key. The ownership has the key and that's how it's gonna work. It doesn't mean somebody can't ram it when, for fun, but, but it's mainly gonna be a double.
I was just saying, if you put a sign out there that says, "Don't drive here."
That means everybody's gonna want to drive.
Be the first one going through it?
It'll, it'll be anonymous gate.
And the main access road, the gray line that goes through the yellow and green, so is that showing the ability for another phase behind the project?
So Earl Lane Road currently is a county roadway. It is a dirt road. It's approximately 30 feet wide. This, this development stops at that large wetland crossing. We do have the pump station site identified, which wasn't identified on the previous phase. That pump station site does accommodate future development and the potential connection of Earl Lane up to Colic Helmey Road.
Okay, so that is an existing dirt road.
It is an existing dirt road, county road. It is, again, not paved at this time, so.
I guess I'm confused. I mean, for, this is for staff. I mean, nobody ever has their, when they're rezoning, has their wetlands finalized, so why were they held so tight to a lot, specific lot number? I mean, is that why they're back here? Is because they've increased?
It was in the preliminary PD that we usually require a lot number and the size of lots and which, the, all the explicit details of it. And so the reason for that is if there's an increase or decrease, for that matter, then they come back because it's a modification to the text of the PD. Not to speak for you, Chelsea.
No, you are fine.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it's because it is a PD.
So they just increased it and they really didn't, there's not a significant change to the overall project.
Agreed.
But they did increase the lots from, let's say, 100 to 120. Now, that's not accurate, but I'm just saying they increased the lot number, so they have to come back through the text process. And then the sketch plan identifies where that increase is.
Okay.
I would ask, though, if, if we do decrease, so once we get through engineering, if there's any reason there's a decrease, that doesn't require coming back to, it's just only if we increase beyond our maximum, correct?
No, that'll be in your final plat that's approved by the board for the subdivision. It'll show and reflect the number of lots in there. You'll have pins in the corners and we'll know how many it actually is, so that's when that's reflected.
Great, thank you.
All right, all right. Can I ask you about your flood study real quick?
Here.
Are, are they making you, or did they request for you to establish BFEs or not?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. So we have, well, we, no, sorry, we don't have base flood, we have base flood elevations with cross-sections.
Okay.
And then the flood protection ordinance governs how high the finished floors would be, yes. But yes, we have cross-sections all the way through here, past Earl Lane, so it extends all the way down to St. Augustine Creek.
Okay.
Up through, there's no other real way to do it, right? So we had to find a tailwater that we could connect to.
Okay.
Carried up, so.
They do it from there, yeah.
The improvements should help flood insurance for most folks that are along this, this wetland corridor up past Earl Lane and into a little bit above that and then...
Yeah, that's why I said, yeah.
And it also tees up the future potential for what's beyond that, to then tie into our flood study to then further carry that.
Okay, did you do a letter map amendment or did they ask you?
So first thing will be going to the county because the county has to do a community acknowledgement of the, of the study, so that'll be coming to you so that that is all tied back together, that you know what we are submitting, so that it's supported or otherwise.
Yes, that's what we wanted to ask, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a, a benefit community-wise.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request?
Amazing.
Discussion from the board. Did you have a question on the number? The original number was 200, is that correct?
So the, the wetland study showed some upland and then they're gonna add 20 lots?
Yes.
And those 20 lots are right there in the center?
Yes.
But that's only 13 lots, if you count those little red kind of...
I'm sure Mr. Hughes can tell you.
So you're correct. So the 13 lots are along the front and there are a few other that, when we laid them out, that we got additional. And I have the two, if anyone wants to see the two side by side, I have a copy of both of them. We also put a cul-de-sac and that was one of the recommendations.
Down at the bottom.
At the one edge. So if anyone would like to see it, so they feel more comfortable with the two differences between the...
I heard that there was 20 additional lots and I...
There were 13 major ones in the middle, but they're dotted throughout otherwise.
They've added seven more throughout the project.
Yeah, based on the wetland and delineation.
Well, and part of it too is when the land planner draws them in, they're conservative on how many they can fit specifically with lot widths, in case they need drainage easements and other things. So once you actually go through the engineering, you, you kind of refine the plan to the point where we were able to get a few more just by virtue of lot widths and minimum standards.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, the reason that I did place the, the condition about the buffers along Hodgeville, he is correct that we have been extensively over the buffers, just to ensure that along Hodgeville Road, those buffers are planted, especially because we have been over multiple ordinance changes and we just want to make sure that those buffers are adhered to. So that is why I did put that condition within the staff report.
The way it's set up right now, does it allow for widening of Hodgeville in the future or is it gonna be a two-lane highway forever and ever?
The microphone's to your left.
Oh, this is my mic? So...
I can, I can't speak fully to the widening of the entire roadway, but I can speak to, we've done a traffic study and the traffic study is gonna require us to put a left turn lane in and a right turn lane into Earl Lane Road, so those conditions are required to make sure we don't lose a little of service on the roadway and promote safety. Now, as to Hodgeville becoming more than a two-lane road, that would require the acquisition probably more of right-of-way than, than what, what has been allocated.
Yeah, we've been talking about that.
We have been talking about that for a long time. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Closed public comment, discussion from the board. Call for, I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, all is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Make a motion to reinclude Ryan Thompson in the meeting?
Yes, bring him back to the table.
Make a motion to reinstate Mr. Ryan into the planning board.
I'll second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. I'm gonna roll in about an hour and a half. Let's take a short break.
No.
Even ten feet?
Nope.
Call this meeting back to order. Item number eight, Cindy and Stephen Pitts request to rezone one out of seven acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for a new home site located at 453 Grayson Road. This is the third district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So, the applicant would like to subdivide the property, again, to create a new home site. Uh, the new home site is less than five acres, and so the request is to rezone to AR2. Staff is recommending alternative number one.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am. Questions at this time? Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Hello?
I'm Cindy Pitts, and I just want to thank you guys for considering this. And I wanna put a new home on an acre of land. As it stands now, there's seven acres, but we wanna just split that up. Um, and it's just my husband and I and our dog. And that, that's it.
Alright. Thank you, ma'am. Questions from the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against?
Um, I'll speak in favor first from the owner of the property.
Okay, I have to get you to speak into the microphone when you're gonna speak. Thank you.
I'm sorry. The owner of the property could not be here tonight, and I'm her sister-in-law, and she is in favor of it as well. And there's already well, septic, and electricity there from a previous mobile home, so everything's already in place.
Okay. And your name is?
Audra Jennings.
Thank you. Can you sign in? Questions? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I make a motion for approval with all staff recommendation.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, ladies. Item number nine is a public hearing for Shannon Skinner. Request to rezone 120.49 acres from AR1 to AR1 to allow for a subdivision to develop residential lots located on Old Louisville Road. This is the third district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So, the proposed development is surrounded by agricultural residential zone parcels. Um, I will say that the future land use map that has been adopted as a policy document does show this area as agricultural. Um, the applicant is proposing to develop thirty-three lots total, uh, thirteen one-acre lots and twenty lots that are greater than two acres. The buffers required between AR1, which is the proposed zoning, and agricultural residential zone parcels is thirty feet. Staff, based on the ordinance, staff is recommending alternative number one for this.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Is there Mr. Skinner or a representative for Mr. Skinner here?
Elvis Skinner. Good evening.
So, do you have anything to add to what she said?
Very little. Um, the zoning is, uh, AR5 currently. We're asking for, for, um, the rezoning here. It's only thirty-three, uh, lots. They're, uh, it's probably as least intrusive as you can get. It's a hundred and twenty acres total. The hot topic tonight seem to be buffers. We've got, uh, natural vegetation. It's not a field out there. All the homes will be septic and wells. We do plan on having covenants, um, keeping it to single-family dwellings and minimum eighteen hundred square feet. Be happy to ask or answer any questions and...
And again, I guess we're not approving the sketch plan tonight. This is zoning, but there was a pretty detailed plan provided. Well, actually, that's helpful. Stay there for a second. So, the existing condition of the, there's, it's treed, but it's not heavily treed, if I can see correctly from the aerial.
Oh, let me go back for you, sorry.
Is it fairly heavily treed?
Yes. I don't know when it, the, uh, property was timbered, but it looks like a minimum of eight years ago. The, the trees are well ten feet above my head.
Okay. And then, am I seeing that correctly on the, the, the plan that was provided as concept? That the idea is to, are those dash lines along the property lines, is that considering shared-use driveways to prevent the number of driveways from being one for every, every lot?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that something you would be willing to condition if it was?
To these specific driveways? That, that's not a problem. I, I thought we were actually coming for sketch plan, but I guess I clicked the wrong button on the portal. So, we've, we've done a little bit of more sketching than...
Alright, thank you, Mr. Skinner. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
Yes. My name is Laura Owens, and I own property, um, less than half a mile from where the proposed subdivision is going. Um, I'm not here necessarily to prevent the subdivision from being built or anything. We just have some concerns, my neighbors and I, on Old Louisville. Um, now, I'm sure, you know, a buffer was mentioned. Um, the concern is, one of them, uh, some of my neighbors, I'm sure they'll speak to this, they have farm animals, um, literal farm animals, horses, cows, pigs. Um, there's a farm, it's called Hayes Farm, that's located on Highway seventeen at the back end of this property. Um, a lot of my neighbors there, um, the usage of the land is primarily agricultural. Um, there's crops that are grown out there, there's people with horses out there, there's literally a horse rescue ranch facility that's also, um, less than a mile from this property. And so, adequate buffering, uh, between this property and the neighboring property, you know, where there's farming activities, agricultural activities going on, um, that's going to be crucial. And as you can see on this, um, site plan there, there are large sections of that property that are marked out as wetlands. And as anyone on that road will tell you, drainage on our section of the road, that's an issue anyway. As the recent rains, um, have, have occurred, my neighbors, they have large, you know, puddles in their yard. The people that live on the adjacent property, um, can show you that, that drainage is an issue. Now, I do realize there is a state law that has to be complied with on drainage that, you know, developers usually go above and beyond to comply with. Our concern is not that they won't do anything about drainage on that property. I'm sure they've seen the, the wetlands that are marked out there, and they've taken that into account as well. It's the maintenance of that. Um, we are already having problems with drainage facilities on Old Louisville not being maintained. Um, there's several, you know, the culverts that go under the roads where, where like the dirt roads connecting to Old Louisville, they're clogged up. Um, some of the ditches are clogged up. And, um, I'm assuming that would be the county's responsibility to, to maintain draining. We just, uh, drainage, we just wanna make sure that whatever drainage is constructed or implemented here, that it's going to stay that way, that it's gonna be maintained. Our concern is, who is going to police that to make sure that that drainage issue, um, that whatever drainage they construct, that they're going to maintain that in the long run and prevent problems, prevent water from going on to neighboring property. I also wanted to find out from the developer, has a traffic study been done on that road? Um, has the average daily traffic been calculated? Um, I will tell you, that road, um, it hasn't been repaved since nineteen eighty-five. I know some, some cracks and some potholes have been fixed, it's been patched up, but that stretch of road hasn't been paved since, since nineteen eighty-five, when I was a child. That's an issue. We're concerned that the condition of the road is not adequate to handle that much traffic. I know the other end of Old Louisville near Highway one-nineteen has been repaved, but where the subdivision is going has not been. Another concern is that, right where the subdivision is going to be located, if you can see on the map, there's a sharp curve there. Um, it's almost a blind curve, um, as you're coming toward it. It's hard to see around that. We wanna make sure that they locate the main entrance to that subdivision in a portion of the road that is safe. Um, if, if not that, maybe get a sign put there that says, you know, cars entering, entering the highway, something to let people know before they come around that curve to be expecting traffic to be coming in and out. Um, there's a safety issue with the sharp curve there and the main entrance of the subdivision. Uh, so we wanna make sure that the, the main entrance or the main driveway in and out of that subdivision is, uh, placed in a safe, um, safe point on that, on that sharp curve. Um, and again, that area is, as it is already zoned, it is mostly agricultural. And we just don't think it's a good fit for our community to locate that many homes right in the middle of places that, while they are residential, are primarily being used for farmland, primarily being used for agricultural purposes. Um, it's the, not so much the subdivision itself, but the number of homes that are being located in the middle of a mostly, mostly agricultural area that's our concern. Um, I'll let some of my neighbors that have, um, adjacent property and have farm animals, I'll let them, I'll let them speak to that. And, uh, thank you for hearing our concerns on this issue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, just want a reminder, too, that we had probably six to seven emails on this as well that we've supplied to you as well. Yep.
Hey, y'all. Um, my name is Brittany Wilson. My husband and I own just over ten acres. We're at two fifty-one. We own the A and B portion. Um, we just bought it last year from my grandmother. I grew up on this land. My main concern is the drainage. It, it is a big issue. Uh, we just moved in to our mobile home there, and the back part of our property, today I went out there. Just with that rain, it's up to my knees during the summertime. It's just up above my ankles. Right, um, right in the middle of the property line, basically, there's a branch creek that runs in between us. And it goes from our side of Old Louisville all the way to the other, and I, I believe it goes all the way down to Highway seventeen. But that creek right now, with all the drainage issues, it's not even really a creek anymore. It's just like a little lake sitting on my property. And my main concern is, I know, you know, you can de- develop land and bring in dirt and all that, but how is it gonna affect my property? Is it gonna make all that, that branch water run onto my property? You know, we plan to get farm animals in the future, crops. I don't, I don't know how that's gonna affect our area. I do have some family members that live in the back. Two fifty-one, five A, two fifty-one, five B. I saw a family that lives over there, and all near around there is, uh, lowland. Their property's always, is underwater pretty much. They're always having to bring in dirt. And I'm just concerned about all the water that's sitting on this proposed development is gonna make its way over to our sides. And Laura brought up the other points that we were concerned about, so I won't, I won't repeat those, but I agree with Laura on the rest. My main concern, though, is drainage.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Let me sound this for God.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
How y'all doing today? Name Dale Newman. I live across the road, dead on the center of his entrance. I've hunted this land for twenty-plus years, and I will tell you that it's wet. And if you look exactly where he's got... Can you go through the other screen, please? I know it's fuzzy, you can't tell a whole lot. The drainage goes all the way from, I can't tell, from the right side all the way through, like she said, that's a drainage, all the way through. There's a channel also that he does not have. He has, uh, lowland right here, but there's a channel that comes off to the ditch. And there's a channel ditch across, sewer drainage across the road. It drains from one side of the ditch to the other to keep that land drained, as well as what they're saying, and it backs up. There's a, there's about a eight-foot drainage ditch on the borderline backside of that, uh, property that backs up on the backside that is full at all times. So, the drainage that he's gonna have, I guess my main concern is, is when he starts putting these thirty-two lots in there, he's gonna have to dig it, he's gonna have to put clay in, he's gonna have to build up septic tank systems in this system. And I understand he's asking for two-acre lots, which is one acre is your minimum, basically, for septic tanks and a well. But when you start packing thirty-two septic tanks in on property that don't drain now, where's all this drainage gonna go? Where's these septic tank systems gonna drain out to in the future? Like I said, the ditches right now are slam full of water. There's no drainage for this property to go anywhere. He starts building it up, he's gonna start backing it up on the, both sides of this property, and these people that's lived here for years are gonna get flooded. So, I guess our main concern is, I mean, you start building up property, you're gonna have eight to nine foot of dirt for people to live on. Because if we would get out and look at the land, or either take aerial views of it, you would see that, right now, probably ninety-nine percent of it is full of water. So, I don't know where he's gonna drain it to, how he's gonna build it. I mean, the, the, the sketch, I can't tell. I would like to have a better sketch of it myself. I know y'all said he needs a better sketch of it. I would like to have a better sketch myself to determine where he's gonna put all the water and all the drainage that's already considered half-wetland. He's also got, I think he's got all driveways down the main, on Old Louisville. He's putting some in acreage dead center wetland. How's he gonna do that? Is he gonna build a bridge to get to it? Or is he gonna build an eight-foot road to get to it? Or how's he gonna do it?
Well, at this point, it's rezoning. I mean, this is a, a sketch, and I mean, um, so he's obviously got a lot of engineering work, wetlands work to do, so... Thank you, Mr. Neese.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ruth Newman. I live across the road, and I have lived on the other side of that property my entire life. I've lived out there seventy-five years, almost. That property is so wet till I leased it for my children to hunt on. And there were times, they couldn't even ride a four-wheeler through that property. It's that wet. Another thing is, with all these driveways that are coming off onto Old Louisville Road, you got to come around that curve. School buses are gonna be coming this way, stopping somewhere along there, at least one or two stops. If you can't guarantee that there's a bumper or something there to slow those trucks down, we've got log trucks, we've got dump trucks, we've got people that speed up and down the road, we got four-wheelers that go up and down the road, you're gonna have a tragedy out there with those kids. And I know because my kids almost got hit one day getting off the school bus, and they're way on up in age now, so this is not something that just happened yesterday. Had the school bus driver not been paying attention, truck coming around that dead curve that they're talking about, would've ran slam over our children and into that school bus. So, I would really ask y'all to do a field trip. Go out there and walk that property yourself, so you know what we're dealing with out there. That's the only way that you literally can approve a subdivision for that property. None of y'all have been out there. I don't even, I don't even know, who is Mr. Deloge?
He, he's not on this board.
Oh, okay. Well, who is my, who is, nobody on the board, on the planning board works out there, right? Nobody's been out there on Old Louisville Road to see the potholes that's out there, nor to see what kind of drainage problems we have out there? That's something that y'all should consider before you approve this subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hey, my name's Tim Hartley. Uh, third generation farmer, raising the fourth and fifth generation farmers right there next to this piece of property. We own twenty, uh, two fifty-two, two A, two fifty-two, two, two fifty-two, two C, two B, and two fifty-two, three, are all our pieces of property. I know everybody's already got up here and said something about the drainage, but I know from, for a fact, with what I have here, thinning out some timber and such, replanning timber, just, uh, the drainage is gonna be an issue. It's gonna back up on our piece of property. I am the man with all the livestock, so I wanna make sure there is a true buffer of sorts. I don't wanna hear anybody complaining about my cows at four-thirty in the afternoon when they go to raising cane 'cause they're ready to eat, or the smell of such cows, or the, the flies that entail. I mean, you know, it's a nuisance. Basically, we have a nuisance law for that purpose. I wanna make sure that's covered down. And then again, I do agree with the driveway issues of all the driveways coming out on that piece of property, um, being a hindrance and a, and a safety issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to, yes, ma'am, you were coming up.
Hey, I'm back again. My name's Audra Jennings, and I live at eighteen fifteen Old Louisville Road, which is about a mile and a half from where the subdivision's gonna go in, and a mile and a half from where the subdivision, that city of Guyton, just approved on Grayson Road, which is how we all get to Guyton. I don't know if anybody has taken into consideration these two subdivisions, and especially that one with over a hundred... one with over a hundred houses going into it, how that's gonna affect our school system. I know they are doing an addition already to Guyton Elementary because they're already overcrowded. I personally do not look forward to the traffic of just trying to get to Springfield and to my job, and trying to get out of my driveway in the mornings and get down Grayson Road, and out on seventeen to get here. If this subdivision goes in along with the other one that they have already approved for the zoning in Guyton on Grayson Road, um, and I believe that's already gone to the, uh, county commissioners and been approved. So, I have a great concern about overloading our schools when we don't have another school and no space to continually make additions onto that school in Guyton. I have a great concern about the traffic. They have a blind spot down at the turn where the subdivision's going in. There are two more sharp turns on that road coming back towards my house, people fly around them, and there've been times when I've gone to pull out of my house and pulled out in front of somebody that I didn't see because they were coming up the road too fast, and the curve is sharp there, and they don't see you, and you're already coming out of the driveway into the road. So this is gonna put a lot of traffic on Old Lewisville Road that none of us really want. Do I have to sign this again?
Please, if you don't mind, because they're two separate public hearing. So, the, the Guyton subdivision that you're talking about, is it south of this property or north of this property?
South.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Uh, hi, my name is Brandon Wilson, um, if you pull up the map, I, me and my wife actually live at two fifty-one eight and two fifty-one eight A, which is the property, by looking at the map to the left, adjacent to it, and it's ten point five acres total, and my concern would be, I know he brought up, Mr. Skinner brought up the buffers, he knows that they're thirty feet and he's gonna maintain that, but my issue with, that would be if you maintain it with the buffers, of it just being a tree line, would be if people cross over to the wooded areas where people actively hunt, if there happens to be like an accident or a death, that would happen, and there's something else that could be, help maintain the buffer situation with that.
Chelsea, can you go back to the sketch plan, or the preliminary plot? Did you have anything further, Mr. Wilson?
Uh, no, sir, not anything that hasn't already been covered, way more than once.
Thank, thank you, sir. Um, is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Ruthie Polk, and I live at nineteen seventy-nine Old Lewisville Road, which is about, uh, maybe a mile from them, and I've lived there for sixty years, but, um, I wanted to clarify, did I hear him say rentals, that there would be rental property going in there also? Can I, can I ask that?
It's a rezoning?
I didn't hear that, he, that.
It's a rezoning.
Single-family, um, eighteen hundred square feet, brick homes, I mean.
Okay, I thought I heard, um, we, several of us thought we heard him say rentals, rental property also. My concerns are just the same as everyone else's, is the, the driveways on the entrances onto Old Lewisville Road, the curves, I'm not all for you widening the road anyway, I, I don't want you to widen the road, I like my road, but, um, there's a lot of people that walk those roads for exercise and all, and there are no walking paths. There's probably wildlife on those, I didn't get out there to see if there was an eagle's nest or anything like that, but I don't know if anybody's done a wildlife survey to see if there's wildlife that will be put out of their homes, so, but I did wanna just clarify about the rental property, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polk.
Do I need to sign this?
Please.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Uh, Mr. Chair, is the applicant's, um, engineer here, or is it just the applicant that's here?
I think it's engineers here.
Okay, I, I need to ask a question when you get done.
Thank you.
Hello, this has been a busy, busy one hearing, uh, my name's Matt Newman, uh, I actually live to the right side, I live in, I think it's two fifty-two A, I live on, have two acres right on the east side of it. Um, just to reiterate, these people have done a really good job, so, to reiterate, I've been on that property ever since I've been able to walk, and when they're talking low, I can almost assure you, there's probably a foot of water in most of them places right now, it's a lot of water. And the map they have doesn't depict all of it, the top left-hand corner, back toward the other group on the other side, it's probably under a foot of water, too. This wetlands map is not very accurate, um, there's a lot of stuff. Um, water drainage, my kids were the ones that almost got hit on the bus, by the way, so that road is pretty, pretty scary. I guess my only concern is, is when does, when and where does the community matter? Because I'm, I'm simple, I'm a country boy, I'm a country boy, I live in a country for a reason, and so does most of these people that are here talking. We don't want a subdivision, we don't want thirty-two houses there, don't think you need it, it's not what the area is, lived my whole life. So, when everybody that's within a five miles of that place steps up here and says, hey, we don't want it, we think it's unsafe, we don't think it's right for the community, what do we do? So that's when it's in your hands. So, I mean, we don't have the money to fight it, we don't have the money to buy it, I tried to buy it, man told me ninety thousand dollars cash upfront. I'm a simple man, I, I go to work every day, work fifty hours a week, I ain't got ninety thousand dollars, period, so I couldn't afford it, but somebody can, and they're gonna turn that six hundred and some thousand dollars into three or four million dollars. But when does the community, the people, all of us, when do we matter? When does, when does it say enough is enough? We don't need all this stuff, we don't want it in our area, it's that simple.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Uh, I already spoke once, uh, by the way, just to let you know, the timber was cut two years ago, so, i- if he's a good engineer, he could tell you how long it's been cut, how long it ain't been cut, but I know it's been cut two years ago, and you can barely get in there to cut it now, so, good luck on this cutting, good luck on making money off of it, but, thank you for y'all's time, thank you for your concern.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, with any additional information?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Jones, I live, I don't know the exact number, but, um, right around that curve, there's like three little houses that I live on the opposite side, and, thank you, um, and I'm just concerned, um, because people really do speed, um, if they're going to make like a turning lane off of it, or widen the road, um, I just don't understand how they're able to put a subdivision where all of it around it is agricultural, um, and that's just like my few concerns, um, and there's a safety concern with everybody right there, and where would they put another, like, bus stop, because they already stopped on that curve, kinda thing.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone with any additional information, new information?
The sketch plan, which is not really, uh, up for tonight, but we, we have it, uh, presented, there's only, um, six shared driveways on this, um, part of the road, with, uh, two sixty-foot wide easement, uh, roads in addition to that. Um, the proper, or you can't see the dimensions of the property, but the property's got twenty-four-hundred feet of road frontage on it, so, almost a half a mile. Um, we have to, we, we followed the F and M County driveway code along with G dot code, as far as spacing and all goes. Um, I'm from F and M also, just like most of these folks, um, so, what I wanted to do and envisioned to do was something that did conform with the community, and I understand some of their, uh, preferences, but, uh, there's, in each direction on Louisville, a half a mile in each direction, there's twenty-seven lots that are with, or, that are less than two acres. I know you've got some larger landowners, but those are just the, the small lots, so, in my opinion, it definitely conforms to the neighborhood, and is, uh, about the least amount of lots, uh, that you can put on it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Skinner, does anybody have any questions, Ms. Skinner?
I do.
And, uh, my engineer is here, if you did have any.
I would like to ask Alec a question, if he's got it. Hey, you don't know what the arc on that curve is, do you?
Uh, the, the roadway curve, I, I don't.
I didn't know if you'd measured it already, okay.
No, but this development is on the, if you had to pick a good side to be on for a entrance and exit to a subdivision, you have the greatest, uh, view.
From the front side, okay. And are, are those, the lots that face Old Louisville Road, those are driveway entrances onto Old Louisville Road?
Uh, the driveways are spaced roughly two hundred and thirty feet apart, so they will be shared.
Okay.
So it's only six driveways onto Old Lewisville Road, is what we were.
Do you have room to backload them?
Um.
So have an alley that comes out inside the subdivision to the entrance to the one?
I don't know, so that's, that's stuff we'll get into in engineering design and, and a sketch plan.
Yeah, just a suggestion.
This is rezoning.
Yeah, go ahead. So, the, the, the sketch, it's not a sketch plan, but the plan that was presented, is only consideration, it shows two, uh, two lines at each property line, are we saying we're grouping two driveways, or they're gonna be shared driveway, one driveway that they share?
This lot has a driveway, this lot will be accessed off of the access easement, this lot will be off the access easement, this will be a shared driveway for these two lots, that one will be a shared driveway, and so on.
So shared, it's not grouped, two, side by side?
Yeah, so it'd be shared drives to limit the number of access points, and that's based on the county's spacing requirement for different types of roads and driveway spacing, I think that was a new ordinance change, it was maybe a year or two ago, and it was being aligned with G dots, driveway spacing based on speed limit and number of lanes.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
What do you anticipate storm drainage-wise, related to this? I know you're a sketch plan, but I don't see any ponds or any sort of.
Yeah, so we, we haven't done a topographic survey, we'll have to do a topographic survey, it'll pick up all of the drainage features, um, and we'll do a drainage study, um, there'll probably be some ditches and easements and a couple of ponds to slow and route the water to where it needs to go. Um, you know, the county ordinance, and it doesn't allow us to release water faster than it does now onto adjacent properties, we can follow the existing drainage patterns, all that's part of the drainage studies. Um, like Mr. Skinner said, there are, is a little bit more work done at this point, um, the wetlands have been delineated and submitted to the Corps for approval, well, they're waiting on that, and a level-three soil survey's already been conducted, um, so, this is kinda what best guess we think the lot yield would be, um, I don't see him getting any more lots than this, um, and by the time you go in and, and do detention and add some ponds and drainage easements and stuff like that, there, there's a good chance it may be a couple less.
I wanna ask one more question, then, the, the roads, the easements that are planned to provide access to the lots that aren't fronting on Old Louisville, that's gonna be built to a county standard road?
Uh, yeah, yes, those will be county standards.
We're in Georgia, it's Louisville.
Oh, excuse me, apologize, I'm from the south end of the county.
Any further questions for Mr. Skinner or, uh, Mr. Metzger? Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there any?
Ma'am, I, ma'am, I'm gonna need you to speak into that microphone right there.
To Mr. Skinner, I'm gonna talk to him. Where?
Microphone.
Do you have a driveway on this end, before you get to the curve?
Ma'am, could you come tell the board?
On this side?
Yes, ma'am, that way we can hear you, she can, yeah, she can show us.
If there's a driveway down there that's gonna have like nine or ten lots.
Yes, ma'am, that's a, that's a, that's a road.
Okay, and then there's another road.
Yes, ma'am.
Right down here.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way to connect that road so that the houses go onto that road and come out of one of the incentives?
So.
That's what I just asked.
So Mr. Chandler asked that, and, um, they're gonna take a look at that whenever they start doing the plan, but that is an interesting idea.
That we take some of that off of the road.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna call, very quickly, Mr. Neese.
How can, how can we, how can we set up a rezon area when you don't even have an engineer drawing to tell us how he's gonna set the drainage, and how everything's gonna go off of this drainage?
Because he needs to know whether he's, can be allowed to even do this before he starts spending a lot of money.
I understand that, but we also need to know where the water's gonna go before we give him the authorization of rezoning, because once we rezon, he can start attacking houses out there.
So, this gentleman's an engineer, I'll let him, um.
Well, they've got their own engineer, I'm a landscape architect, but I do work in this industry, I mean, there, there are ordinances in place that address that from beyond, but what, rezoning is a land use decision, right, whether or not it's, this land use makes sense, drainage, I understand is a concern, trust me, we've, we've seen that on even listen. Significant, uh, challenges, we do understand that, that's why, one of my questions was that, um, to the point you said that they could start building houses tomorrow, they can't, they still gotta go through, that's why I asked the question about the roadway, if it's built and designed to a county standard road, that means they gotta design it, they've gotta provide stormwater stor- studies and reports, um, so, that is an extra level, um, but without getting through this step, you don't go through that level. This is the first step.
So, to expand on what, um, he said, so there is a rezoning process to determine whether they can do a subdivision in an AR one. The next step is a preliminary plan, the next step is a final plan, so all those things have to go through this process. The rezoning is just the first step of, of one to three possibly steps that occur in this, so, if they can't rezon it, there's no sense in doing a sketch plan, a preliminary plan, or a final plot. So that's how the subdivision process works, it's a little bit different than if it was a commercial building or something you see earlier tonight, so this is a subdivision, it's treated differently, it's part two, Article B, on the website, if you wanna go look at all the requirements of what's necessary for a subdivision, so that's what this is, they have to meet those standards of, of everything, plus soil and water, plus, um, DPH upstairs, Department of Public Health, so there's a lot of criteria that goes on after the rezoning, um, some of it may reduce the number of lots they have, some of it not allow the access to the roads, we have an access management plan, we have all these things that are in place that you may not be aware of after rezoning, where there's a lot of, um, scrutiny taking place on what actually occurs on that property even after it's zoned.
And to follow up with what, um, Ryan said, and Mr. Metzger, I mean, there are rules and laws in place, um, as far as drainage, um, and, and it simply says it cannot leave this piece of property any faster after development than it does day one. Um, there's a rules and laws put in place by FM County, the state of Georgia, the federal government, Corps of Engineers, um, so, I mean, if it does, there are a, there's a, there's a lot of laws that says it can't.
Well, one of his driveways on the curve, just past the curve, is right in the drainage.
So, whenever they truly start working on this, I mean, I'm glad they showed us a plan, but sometimes the plans like these, which aren't concrete, get confusing, because we're, like Ryan said, we're talking about, you know, does this make sense in this area? Um, and I know, I know that's a, yeah, it's a good question, and not something everybody's gonna agree on tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So, at this time, I'm gonna close public comment, um, discussion for the board. So, I mean, to me, I've heard a lot of things with traffic, I mean, obviously, the curve, the line of sight, um, you know, how, if this is allowed, how do you ensure that, you know, the neighbors with the livestock, um, you know, I'm a country boy, the livestock's there first, I mean, I don't think that's fair, um, for people to move in and start dictating what the neighbors can and can't do on their land, um, you know, I have some concern about the buffer, so, let me hear it.
I guess I have a question, uh, recently, policy adopted, future land use map?
Yes, sir.
Shows it as agricultural?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other? Are there any other true residential subdivisions in the area? I understand there's some lots that may be two acres or less, but.
Let me move to our, here is our current, um, zoning map.
I mean, I.
Future land use map?
This is our current, um, zoning map, uh, not the future land use map right now.
I believe there's two subdivisions down at the end of Grayson Road, which I don't know how far that is, but.
I think there's another subdivision down on Old Louisville Road towards, um, one nineteen.
There is.
Chelsea, do you have access to the future land use map over there?
Um, I do, so, um, based on what, um, Ms. Easton just showed me, it looks like, uh, one point six three miles is the closest, um, subdivision, and it is an R1 zoned subdivision to this property. Access to our future land use map, I can, if you give me one moment. Uh, let me, is that?
It is, there's one at the end of, um, Grayson Road and Old Lewisville, and then there's another one just down Old Lewisville. And then there's one even further down, Old Lewisville toward Highway one nineteen. Which I believe has a much higher density.
I can show you the, uh, future land use map if you would like to see it.
Yes, please.
Let me pull that up. One moment, please.
Any further discussion while we're waiting on the map delay?
No, that's my main question.
So here is your future land use map and I'll pull up the, here is your legend for that, and if I zoom out for you. So where my cursor is, that is the property. And I'll keep my cursor on it as we move further out. So you can see.
Do you see Grayson Road right there, do you know?
Yeah, I see where we're talking about.
Yes, and here is that, um, subdivision we were speaking of. But here is that property, and that darker color green is the agriculture.
And you'll notice that the lighter green to the south and southeast is agricultural residential.
Right, okay. Can you answer my question?
Yes, sir.
Do you wanna expand on the map? I mean.
My thoughts on it? Sure, why not? I've been talking online, huh?
Yes, before I go back, I'll leave it here for a moment.
I'll be brief. In my opinion, it's a stretch away from the AR, uh, the, um, the ag residential land use. And if, you know, we have given thought to it, um, then that's the purpose of the future land use map. We have, we have to make amendments to it from time to time. You can see it's speckled all over the place, um, as things go, so that's, you know, if it's the case, I think we need to figure out a way to reconsider the, what that future land use is considered in that area, because it will change what that is. It will become a residential subdivision. Just for that parcel, but nonetheless.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a motion. Ryan, you wanna make one?
Sure, I will. Uh, based off of the future land use map, I'm gonna make a recommendation for denial.
Motion for denial, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, all those in favor of denial? I might deny. Any opposed, motion carried by all. This is a recommendation to the county commissioners. Item number ten, Mark Jacobs requests to rezone twenty point four one acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for a subdivision to create new homesites located on Highway one nineteen south and four seventy-five Little McCall Road. It's the third district.
Yes, sir, so the applicant is requesting to rezone, uh, both parcels, as you can see here. So it is this parcel, um, that I'm kinda circling here with my cursor, and then this parcel as well, um, from AR1 to AR2. This is an estate, uh, split that you can see into five parcels. A sixty foot access easement has been provided for the lots, um, that do not have direct road frontage. The lot that does not have frontage onto, the lots that do not have road frontage onto Highway one nineteen, again, do have that sixty foot, um, access easement. This lot here that does have the frontage, um, does have the required one hundred foot, um, one hundred feet, excuse me, that is required. Staff is recommending alternative number one. And let me, here's a better view of those two parcels.
All right, is there a representative?
Hi, I'm Mark Jacobs, I own the two properties. The, uh, the purpose for the, uh, rezoning was to, uh, allow our kids to be able to buy and build on the property behind us. And, uh, when we moved on to the property about three years ago, we're on the Little McCall roadside. Uh, our property is cleared all the way back to the woods, and we realized that if the owner, current owner, or subsequent owners ever cleared those five acres or so of woods, we would be looking at the back of a bunch of houses in one nineteen. So we wanted to try to gain control of the woods there to preserve them, uh, for the beauty of our property. And we were able to acquire that property from the previous owner. And I wanna make, we're also able to take advantage of the new, uh, minor subdivision rule. We had originally gone into it to subdivide it to only three properties, knowing that in a year or so, we would need to subdivide again, but we're able to provide now for the five full lots that, that we can fit onto that.
Family. Family subdivision, definitely.
Family subdivision.
Yeah, not minor. But he still is happy.
Any comments from the board?
There are no more than three lots south of the, or whatever, I forget what our standard, isn't it three? Access easement?
That's what the subdivision ordinance changed, one of the things.
Okay.
Five.
Never mind.
Yeah, and it's called a family subdivision now.
Yes, sir, and eventually, um, the applicant does hope to, uh, recombine, uh, lot number five here into his home property here. So, um, this will come back for a recombination, um, as you can see by the aerial, uh, to preserve that wooded area, uh, for his home as well, so.
So are we rezoning the front piece too, the current home site?
Yes, sir.
So there's more lots that could be dented in the future?
Could be, that's not the intention.
I know, I just meant to look at it that way.
Yes, it's on the table if you.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Any further questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this?
My name's Jay Wilcox, I own the property to the left, I guess, if you're looking at it.
Here, I'll go to that, there you go.
Yes, um, was that three twenty?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so basically the same thing for several years ago. I came before y'all and asked for the same thing for my daughter. I just wanted to just verify from him that it is just gonna be for family use only? So that when you say a family subdivision, it has to be family?
That's by definition.
Yeah, not by law.
So ultimately, he could just change his mind and it could be for anybody? Is that correct?
I mean, yes, sir, it will be his property, so he can sell it if he chooses. I mean, I would hope that he wouldn't stand there and speak into that microphone and do that, but.
Right, okay. So just, as long as it's, I mean, I'm just doing the same thing. So if he's doing that, I'm perfectly good, but if it's just gonna be for another neighborhood, that I do have concerns with that piece. So this is for family?
No, I need to clarify, uh, before the board that the front property is under contract, subject to rezoning to a local reputable builder that will eventually put a house on it. Uh, and then the back three pieces of property, um, should I be?
Yes, sir, I need, I need you to speak into the microphone, I'm sorry.
Could you refer them by the number that they are on the plat?
Lot number, uh, lot number one is, uh, under contract to a builder that will at some point build a home that meets the county codes and, uh, the discussion was had with the realtor that we don't want something that'll detract from any of our property that we maintain in the back, uh, that we build on in the back. My understanding was the one to three lots is the family subdivision?
One to five now.
One to five is the family subdivision?
Minor is five to ten.
And the minor is five to ten, thank you. I appreciate you pointing out that that's name only. I don't want any of my children to be obligated to own that house in perpetuity, in perpetuity, forever, and not be able to sell it because it's not family. They could sell it, and there's one property, lot number two, that, uh, is not spoken for by my third child, but could end up having to be sold to an individual. So, you know, if committing to it as a family is a requirement, um, I think, you know, obviously lot number one, we violate that already, and I wanna be clear that that's the plan, is to sell that to a builder. But we have the other two properties asked, uh, to be purchased by our children, two of our three children, and we'll be taking lot number five into our own property eventually, or at least maintaining control over it so it doesn't get, uh, logged.
Can I ask a que- oh, sorry.
So lots three, four, and five will be in your family, and lots one and two, we know lot one is gonna be in a developer, and lot two could be your son, but maybe another person?
Yes, sir.
So Ryan, in the past, it has been strictly family members and based on the three.
Right.
And the definition does say family subdivision based on the definition of family. Up to you guys to decide how you wanna handle that.
Right, but I guess I'll back up. We are still just talking about the rezoning aspect right now.
That's correct.
So family, not family, I understand it's in our code.
Anything potential.
From a standpoint, there's five potential lots there, right? That's the, that's what, or what, excuse me, actually, no, there's probably five and beyond that, right?
Probably ten.
What we're considering, so that's just, I just threw that out, um, you know. I appreciate your clarification, it would change mine one way or the other if it's family or not, because we, you know, it's difficult to control.
So one, one has access on Highway one nineteen, the other four, if we're looking at one, two, three, four, and five right now, the other four have access on the property easement?
Yes, the shaded lines.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Do you have anything further, sir?
Uh, just wanna, just kinda had questions about that piece.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
I have one more point. You did mention that it could be up to ten lots, I believe I heard.
Well, he's just saying if you take the nine point eight acres and do something with it.
Right, I, this, there's a soil report on the right side of my screen. You might be able to squeeze one more lot out of that property, but between the, uh, the ditches and the buffers and a designated or estimated wetland, I'm not sure what he referred to it as in the back right col- uh, corner of the property, and the buffer and, uh, Pelham B soil, you might get one more acre, uh, or one more lot on the property that borders our.
Not a lot of hope.
Our neighbor over here. Um, but that is the one that is absolutely definitely spoken to, for, by our daughter and son who has family in the area, and we expect them to be on that property, uh, for ages. But there'll be no further development outside of what you see there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Anyone else wish to speak? Close public comment. Conversation from the board, discussion.
Do we have the other, uh, surrounding zoning looking to? So adjacent to R1.
And two, R2s in the front.
AR2s. And there's not any AR2 on Little McCall right there? You asking me? Yeah, I just, I guess I'm asking for confirmation or.
Uh, no, sir, so, um, that light green is AR1 and, um.
What, I mean, was there?
That surrounding area.
Direction or guidance why the thirty, three twenty dash fifty-two is brought into the zoning?
So, um, because the applicant would like to take lot five and rezone it into his property, um, eventually he will need to have that, um, lot five and his lot, that thirty, uh, three twenty dash fifty-two, to be the same zoning, um, to be able to have that recombination. So, um, that is why, uh, it needs to be the same zoning, um, because that, let me go back here. Because lot five, which is three point eight one three acres approximately, um, is less than five acres. It does need to be AR2. Because of that being AR2, he wants to, or is requesting to rezone his nine point eight four six acres to AR2 so that it can be, uh, recombined with the three point eight one three acres.
He, he, could he not keep the front lot as AR1 and rezone the three point eight one when he gets to recombining them? I think the board might feel a little safer like that.
So yes, he does have that option as well.
I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I would.
Yeah.
And that's acceptable to me.
To go out, to go out the other way, to go out across the nine point eight?
Well, no, no, what I'm saying is, if there's no desire to do it, right, and we're just doing it to allow for some future recombination that once combined would still meet AR1 standards, why rezone all over to AR2, right? Let's rezone the piece that needs to be subdivided to AR2 if, if, assuming we do that, leave the other piece. If a piece of five, just a piece of it even, needs to come in, then you could rezone that piece back to AR1 and you'd still be compliant.
And do the recombination, yeah.
I'm totally good with that.
All right, any further discussion? Call for a motion. Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there some discussion?
Oh, with, with keeping the nine acre lot at AR1.
Yeah, could we do that on the fly, amend their applica- or suggest the?
Yeah, we can, we can do less, we can't do more.
Yeah, it can't be changed at the commissar level without having the second reading, second reading.
Okay, yeah, but, so basically leave the nine point eight that fronts on Little McCall, that stays the same zoning?
Make a second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item eleven is a public hearing from Milton Ron Jr. requesting to rezone point zero seven eight acres of seventy-eight point seven seven five from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the division of an encroachment of a shed from surrounding parcel located at Lexington Avenue Extension. This is the fifth district, Mets, Chelsea.
Yes, sir, so the small accessory structure that you can see, um, here on this, on the plat, um, is encroaching. It is currently over the property line. The applicant is, um, requesting to rezone the point zero seven eight, um, acres from the larger seventy-eight point seven seven five acres from AR1 to AR2, uh, to recombine it, um, because it must be the same zoning as the parcel it's being combined with. So staff is recommending alternative number one.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir, uh, it's, uh, trying to prevent a problem in the future. You know, there's no problem right now, but if something happened to myself or my daughter and the house had to be sold, they built a shed that's sticking over on my piece of property and it would cause a problem in the future. So I thought we'd try to settle it before it happened.
That doesn't happen very often.
I'm sorry you had to sit here all night.
I've heard a lot of stuff going, this should be simple compared to everything y'all did.
No, this is gonna be complex.
Can I get you to state your name?
Milton Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this?
I've, I've got one question.
Go ahead.
Did you wear a red shirt? Did you wear a red shirt to try to fit in with most of us?
I did not, no, but I will next time.
I didn't get the memo. All right, I'll close public comment. If there's no discussion, I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion for approval with all staff recommendation.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all's in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Ron.
Thank y'all. Good luck tonight.
Twelve is postponed, thirteen is, Mr. Donnie Bazemore requests to rezone one point five acres from R one to B three to allow for a car lot located at fifty-nine forty-seven Georgia Highway twenty-one south of fifth district. Ms. Chelsea?
Yes, sir, so the proposed rezoning has been before the planning board and board of commissioners in twenty-twenty and then again in twenty-twenty-two, and both times it was denied. At the previous meetings, the concerns were consistent and encompassed, uh, both that Lewis Drive being a residential street, um, an increase in traffic on Lewis Drive, and then access to the proposed development, again, being on Lewis Drive. Um, this parcel is part of Goshen Terrace subdivision, um, however, it does face Highway twenty-one. The staff is recommending approval, uh, but with the following conditions for this, that a final plat showing the parcel being taken out of the Goshen Terrace subdivision uh, shall be submitted to the Effingham County Development Services, uh, again, for review and signature and being recorded before the rezoning can take, can take effect. A buffer shall be maintained per, shall be maintained per Effingham County Code of Ordinance. Um, and then a sketch plan must be approved, uh, by the Board of Commissioners before site development plans. Uh, and with that, staff does recommend alternative number one.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there a representative here tonight for Mr. Bazemore?
Uh, good afternoon, uh, board and staff. I'm Elick Metzger with EMC Engineering, um, working with Mr. Bazemore. Um, we do have, uh, two letters of support he brought with him tonight I'll turn in. Uh, one is from the Bank of Newington parcel, uh, next door, and then one is for the, uh, the parcel to the, to the south, um, owned by Greg Howes. This also is on commercial. And I do have a couple of handouts. I don't know if y'all got these in your packages or not. They were some color site plan renderings and stuff.
Oh. Oh, actually, if you want to take them over to the clerk sheet. Yeah.
Thirty, thirty foot buffer in the back.
Alec, did you say the, um, the house on the corner of Chimney and, uh, twenty-one, um, is going to be, uh, Bank of Newington property?
Uh, yes, sir, so, um, I've got a few points, I'll go ahead and, and hit those, um. So they're asking, they've, they've been up here a couple of times before, um, the plan was kind of, uh, not complete. Some of the information, um, was not all there on how they were going to operate the business, so, um, we helped him put together a good plan tonight, and he had another person put together some color renderings of kind of what the site would look like, um, and what he was wanting to do. Um, so this property's been in their family for many years, I think he said about thirty years. Um, they operate a car sales business in Rankin already near Rusty Pig. Um, they want to relocate it to this, this property, um, and it be owned and ran by their family, mainly, mainly their son and daughter. Um, they'll, they'll have about approximately five employees or so. One of the concerns was, you know, cars and trucks being delivered to the site on eighteen wheelers and all that kind of stuff, that's not going to happen. He said cars will be driven to the site by drivers, um, and delivered to the site. Um, so no, no big trucks entering, uh, Lewis Drive, parking, blocking Highway twenty-one, none of that stuff's going on. Um, the house will be converted to a sales office, um, parking, handicap, uh, parking will be added. Uh, the site will be accessed from, uh, Lewis Drive. They're going to try to develop it in as a low impact as possible with gravel, um, parking, some concrete sidewalks and stuff as minimal as possible for handicap access. The drive will be shifted away from twenty-one closer to the backside of the property to give more space between twenty-one and the, uh, the entrance. That allows, um, more room for turning movements, um, and, and stuff like that. They, uh, estimate from their business that they have now that maybe five customers per day come in. So you're looking at five employees and five customers, so you're talking about, you know, five or ten vehicle trips. That's very low. Um, that's, when you look at the I T E manual for trip generation, you know, that's about equal to a residential house. So you're, you're talking about a business that's very low impact to the, to the area, um, very low traffic generation. Um, let's see. The traffic that will be coming to the site will be, uh, you know, typical car and truck traffic that's similar to the residential stuff, so you, that, this is not going to generate a bunch of, um, eighteen wheelers and non-normal everyday truck tra- uh, car and truck traffic that would be on this road anyway. All the other sites along twenty-one and adjacent sites are commercial. And the one that's in between Lewis Drive and Chimney Road is two parcels. That was recently annexed into the city of Rankin and is going through the process to, or currently being, uh, changed into commercial for Bank of Newington. So this would be the only, only piece left really that fronts Highway twenty-one that's not any commercial use on it. Um, buffers will be provided, um, along the rear. We're talking about a thirty foot buffer, um, with a six foot white vinyl fence. So there's existing vegetation there now, that'll be enhanced, um-
Is there enough vegetation to cover the thirty foot buffer now, or is it going to have to be improved?
Um, we don't have a tree survey showing the spaces and all that stuff. There might be some trees that have to be added, but there is quite a few trees that's going to be remaining in that area.
Mr. Terry, remember the new ordinance says if you can put a fence up, you can reduce it by ten feet, if they choose to do so. So thirty feet, he would have twenty feet of vegetation and then the fence.
So it, it- So it's partly up now if you've been by the site, some, some of the fence is already there, so you could actually see what it looks like, um, almost as completed. There'll be, uh, another, um, fifteen foot buffer on the east side, um, the existing vegetation will be used and planted with trees to fill in the, in the gaps. And, uh, ten foot buffer on Lewis Drive and twenty-one, uh, that would be mainly shrubs, uh, leg growing type, uh, buffer material, not to block, um, the cu- the view of the cars from the highway.
So you, Don, Alex, on the east side, is that the house tr- um, Greg House?
Yes, sir, that's, that's that track.
I think that was the south side, but okay, east.
Yeah.
All right. So, and what is, what is the buffer there?
Um, it would be, um-
You mean, the buffer to, up to Mr. Bazemore, or from Mr. Bazemore to him?
Depends on the, like, use of the ground. To, um, house.
So we're showing a fifteen foot buffer because that's, that's, um, B two zoning commercial, uh, B two zoning already.
All right.
But there is also an existing, uh, bay drive that's a unopened right of way there. Um, so it's an additional thirty feet of buffer, and then on Mr. Howes's property, he's providing a thirty foot buffer. So there's, you know, what's that, sixty, seventy, seventy-five feet of buffer? Um, there'll be some site lighting added, um, for lighting, that'll be designed by Georgia Power, uh, directed downward in design, so, you know, we don't have any light pollution across into residential areas. So we are asking to rezone the property, uh, you consider that tonight. We think the proposed use fits into the area, the traffic will be minimal, um, the impact of Lewis Drive will be, uh, not anymore than what's there from the existing house now. Uh, buffers will be used and required by ordinance to screen development. We would ask one of the conditions to be removed, um. I was, just saw it today, a final plat showing that the parcel has been taken out of the Goshen Terrace subdivision shall be, shall be submitted. That's, uh, really unnecessary, um, the property is already plotted, recorded, and documented at the courthouse. We're just basically rezoning that, um, existing parcel. There's no reason for us to submit a plat, um, that really doesn't remove it from a subdivision. We're just talking about changing the zoning. So I don't know of any ordn- any county ordinance or survey requirement that would require that. Really, I think it's a use, useless step that would just take additional time and, and money.
What were staff thinking that would be? How do you even define that survey? Just it would no longer have a reference to-
So if you went to research it, and you would say, let me research the subdivision, that would show up in the subdivision as a recorded plat for the subdivision? So that's how we record subdivisions is with a plat?
Right.
So if it's no longer in the subdivision, need to be removed from the plat for the subdivision? That's the reason why, it's the research behind it. So if you researched that and say what happened to it, where, you know, ten years from now, five years from now, if it's out of the subdivision, then it would rezone properly and it's plotted as an individual lot. If it's rezone within the subdivision, now you have subdivision that has to be three in it instead of all R ones.
I, I don't see where the actual plat does any of that, um, so, I, I've never seen it before, and y'all rezone a lot of properties that are in subdivisions, it, all the time. Pretty much everything that's on, everything that's up here is in a subdivision at some point.
I mean, not, not trying to kick the can down the road, but, you know, when you get, this gets to the county commissioners, the county attorney will be there. I mean, it sounds more like a question for him, to be honest.
I, I've never seen it before in all of-
I mean, I'm not sure how to do it. Um, but as, as old as that subdivision is, I mean, you know, I mean, it was probably just lots created.
It's had a name.
Yeah, when, when you do the research, I mean, it'll, it would show that plat, but, I mean, the deeds and, and all the references that go along with it are part of that research. So, I mean, it would be clear in the rezoning records.
All right, so do you have any additional information?
I, I don't, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Of course, I got a couple.
About, um, Chimney Road and, um, twenty-one having a traffic light?
No idea about that. I know we work right there, our office is right by Chimney Road.
You know about it, wouldn't you?
And I, and I don't turn left.
Um.
Right?
Go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, just a couple of things, I jotted down, uh, obviously your sketch is just a sketch, there'll be some stormwater elements associated with the amount of-
Y- yes, so, uh, we, the property generally drains toward, uh, that direction that we showed the stormwater area. Uh, I don't foresee it be, because it's such a low impact design, basically existing lot, we're going to add some, uh, gravel parking, um, so more likely it'll be, uh, just a storage area instead of a wet pond, uh, probably a dry pond that can be moved.
And it, the request is for B three?
Yep.
Yep.
Are you lim- uh, is the applicant willing to limit it to the use that you're proposing?
Um, Mr. Bazemore is here, he may like to say something and he can answer that.
Donnie Bazemore, I couldn't hear your question.
Oh, sure, um, but one of the things we've been trying to focus on is, um, we understand the use you're proposing, but there's a lot of other uses allowed in B three that, assuming it got rezoned, would be allowed the very next day. Um, and my question was, would you be willing to condition the zoning to this use? Or maybe eliminate some other uses that might be allowed in a B three?
Yes, sure.
That would be, uh, maybe detrimental to, or more detrimental to the adjacent residential?
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that you can't do those things, you would just have to come back through this process and ask to change it.
Our, our, we're a family-based business, uh, I've been in Rankin for four years now. They sold that property in December, uh, the new owners gave me, uh, nine months to get out. And, um, we just, we, everything we do is in F and M County, we don't do no work at our lot. We just sub it all out to different, uh, county stores. In, uh, same way with washing cars, we don't do none of that, we just sell cars. It's right by my son, if you've ever been by there, he's very particular about the way, he won't even let nobody else park cars but himself. We keep it neat, keep it clean. We take care of the grass between us and Riley's now, and it doesn't even belong to us. Got a little bit of cold, I can't hardly talk. But anyway, I just want to, it's going to be a first-class operation, is what I'm trying to say. The first two times I came here, I wasn't prepared. And I met Mr. Metzger, did one of these things, and I felt like that's the route around I needed to take this time. But there were, there were no, like he said, we have retired drivers to bring our cars in, uh, to deliver them and all that. We don't have no haulers, there's not, there will be no, um, crazy stuff going on there. We, we decided to keep the houses and office to kind of keep it looking the same as it is now. Uh, Mr. Smith, who lives right behind where the bank is going, he was, he's, I thought he was going to be here tonight, I could have got a letter from him, but I guess unhappy he wasn't able to show up. But he was one of the main ones that opposed it last time, and I was certainly glad to get a letter from him.
So, um, I know there's a lighting plan, I mean, no bright lights shining in the neighborhood. Um, you, I've looked at your business, you don't have a mechanic shop?
No.
So.
No, don't want one.
You work normal hours, like-
Our, our hours are nine to six, Monday through Friday, ten to two on Saturday. We take, uh, Thanksgiving, we're, we're off from Thursday till the following Monday. Memorial Day, Labor Day, we're off that Saturday and Monday, we, all holidays, we, you know, we take, and, uh, probably more than most people, because it is my son and my daughter that runs the place. Uh, never, never ever would be a Sunday or anything like that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Bazemore. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Favor or against? I call for a motion. I'll make a motion to-
Let me ask Ryan a question, uh, what was that stipulation that was conditional use that only?
Well, I was just throwing it out there because B three is our most intense commercial use, right? And this use isn't necessarily that intense, what he's proposing, because this is the only option I think he's got to be able to do the, the auto sales.
So we should make that-
I'm not saying we have to, I think we just need to consider putting a di- condition on it because I think the most intense commercial use we have, it could be that in the future.
Um, I guess along that same lines, so we do have to have a sketch plan and come back, and, and that's what we're going to do next, is approve the use. So, I mean, if he comes back and he wanted a different use, he's got to come back with a new sketch plan, correct, so?
Yeah, but the sketch plan doesn't control the use. No, I bet it. I could be wrong.
Correct.
Right, but, but, I, that's why I'm asking right now, because I mean-
But I guess, I guess Alex's, uh, point is we could deny a sketch plan. If it's, if it's the wrong use, but I mean, I, I agree with Ryan, but I think that's the point, that's the point you're making.
Yeah.
Yeah, just know I addressed the board and we're not, I mean, to me, if the sketch plan meets the-
I, I personally like-
We can't, we, I mean, the use is allowed, that's not the time to determine the use, this is the time.
I, I like, I like setting some standards on, uh, you know, on the use. On that note, I make a motion to approve with the stipulation that it's used for the business proposed before us tonight. All right, motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, all's in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. I don't know how much you paid that crowd that you brought with you the last two times, but I'm grateful. I appreciate the persistence. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Item number sixteen, thank you, Mr. Metzger. You want me to back out? Consideration of amendment to the Code of Ordinance, is part two, official code, appendix C, article five, table of permitted uses. Can we table this?
Sure, that's fine.
Does anybody wish to speak on this?
No.
Can I get a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Till?
Next meeting.
Which is?
Next meeting.
February thirteenth, I think.
Thank, ooh, sure.
You good?
Yep.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all's in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. All right, moving on to sketch plans. Mr. Donnie Bazemore requests approval for a sketch- Mr. Donnie Bazemore requests approval for a sketch plan for Rankin Car Lot located at fifty-nine forty-seven Georgia Highway twenty-one South. Zone R-one, proposed only B-three, fifth district. Mr. Metzger.
Uh.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Ms. Easton.
The applicant is requesting approval for a sketch plan for Rankin Car Lot. The existing house, you know, as mentioned earlier, will be used for the office. The existing driveways are currently on Highway twenty-one on Lewis Drive. The applicant will need to get a encroachment permit for the new commercial driveway they're proposing off of Lewis Drive. You can see on your staff report, the applicant will also need to, um, submit a buffer plan and to show that the buffers are getting repainted or replanted. Uh, also, um, there needs to be another condition attached to the approval. Applicant must adhere to Georgia stormwater. Um, staff recommends alternative one.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. I mean, obviously we've already looked at this. Do you have anything to add to it?
Um, I just had a couple of questions about some of the stipulations. Um, so some of these stipulations are getting added into staff reports and we're not really seeing them until we get here to talk about them. So for instance, A is pond is moved further south, adding more distance between it and the buffer. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what that means. And that should be something that's dictated by our design and review through staff and the engineer. The encroachment permit, I'm assuming that is the Effingham County driveway encroachment permit. That would be part of the contractors and the, and, and the design anyway. Um, and C is a buffer map and buffer contract. As part of our plan, moving forward, we will have a plan for review in the plans for, for the buffer. I'm not sure what the contract means.
That's just showing what kind of trees. Sorry, my wording was a little nut.
Alright, uh, that's fine.
Definition by name.
Okay, so all, all that'll be included in the plan. Uh, A I'd like removed, cause I just don't think it, I have no idea what that even means. And that would be dictated and designed in. And, uh, I mean, we may not even have much of a pond when we get done.
Mr. Chairman, that, uh, section A just refers to the fact that the pond does touch the buffer in the submitted site sketch plan. So that's just to make sure that the buffer does not, I mean, the pond does not encroach in the buffer once they start, um, digging.
So if you remember, um, Pine Grove Mustang Drive, where they originally had the pond next to the buffer? And then when they dug it, we had to put a stop work order on it. Because it encroached into the, not only the buffer, but in the manager. You remember that whole thing? So we're just making sure that if they're close, they just gotta be aware of it.
Please don't dig up the buffer.
He's now more aware of it than he was before.
Alright, um, I'm clear on them now.
So you good on all the stipulations then?
Sure. Unless you won't take them all off.
Any further questions, comments? Call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second? Second. Second, I was in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
Thank you.
Item two, sketch plan for Howard Hodges. Request approval for sketch plan located on Highway twenty-one. Georgia Highway twenty-one, Zone R-four, third district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, the applicant is requesting approval of a sketch plan for the RV park on Highway twenty-one. This previously was rezoned back in two thousand and two and was an RV park for a short time. It was already approved with the conditional for it as well. Due to not operating it over five years, the applicant must adhere to today's ordinances. Um, the parcel is currently used on fourteen, one acre of. Can you not hear me? Sorry. Uh, the parcel is currently fourteen acres of R-four with one acre of B-three, with the condition of only being a dog training facility. The ordinance, um, does require fifteen acres of R-four. The ordinance also requires a engineered site plan. I, can you put that one up? Um, the applicant has submitted this sketch plan. It does not appear to be engineered. The RV sho- sites are shown varying from size from thirty-three by forty to twenty-four by sixty-seven. The ordinance requires a minimum lot width of thirty-five foot with a minimum square footage of twenty-five hundred. Um, buffers will need to adhere to the twenty-twenty-three buffer ordinance. Um, of all thirty, of all sides being thirty-foot to the residential properties and fifteen from the B-three to B-two section. Uh, staff is recommending alternative one, with the condition of additional condition of applicant must adhere to Georgia stormwater.
Alright, thank you. Questions? You said this is not an engineered sketch, I mean.
Uh, it does not appear because it does not have the engineered stamp on it. It very well could be. We just need to see.
Pretty fancy. It's pretty good if you whip it out by hand.
Well, but we don't, we don't require a stamp on the sketch plan. You require a stamp on the construction documents, correct?
Uh, the, the ordinance specifically says an engineered site plan for the R-four ordinance.
But not signed and sealed by a registered engineer.
We just have to have proof that it is.
Yeah, well.
Alec, did you do this?
Good evening, sir.
Howard Hodges.
Good evening.
Alright.
Um, did you do this or did you have an engineer do this or?
There is an engineered, uh, plan. Um, this is a sketch plan, so I didn't know that it needed to be submitted as a, as an engineer plan.
I mean, it looks pretty engineered to me, right?
Thank you. Just send it to us as a condition of the approval.
Any further questions or comments?
What, does the sketch plan as submitted meet the buffers that we're saying it has to meet?
No, sir, it does not.
And are you aware of that?
Um, the, I'm sure there's gotta be some adjustment. Um, there is heavy vegetation. Um, there's at least fifty feet all the way around the, uh, the actual buffer as it is now.
Not for that sketch, not unless that property Ryan is on.
I, I understand, but.
Well, that, I mean, to be honest, that's the intent of the sketch plan. We're approving what you're proposing to do, right? So, um, I, I guess that's kinda proven a bit of staff's point of the con- comment. Like, it, it needs to show the buffers that we're, cause I just don't want you to get it approved thinking you've got twenty-five or fifty or whatever the number is and then it's, it's not that.
And maybe I'm the only one that thinks that. I mean, the sites are already there, though. They have to be changed to fit the, the new standards is what you're saying there, right?
Yes, sir. Um, as it sits right now, they have to be a minimum of thirty-five foot wide. There's numerous lots that are, um, less than thirty. I actually believe all of the lots are less than thirty-five foot wide and less than twenty-five hundred square foot. That's required by the ordinance.
Back to the drawing board.
So, well, I guess the, the big, the big problem is the buffer. Is that correct?
The buffering, um, it does not meet the required acreage. And the lot widths are not according to ordinance.
Alright. Any further discussion, questions? To move it forward, we could just deny it tonight and it goes to commissioners and then they could get their revised sketch plan for the commissioner meeting?
Yes, sir. So the conditions, um, it does include the twenty thousand dollar warranty bond to verify that this, these changes do happen.
Oh, so you're proposing to have them bond that the sketch plan revisions happen? Is that what that is?
Yes, sir.
Say it again.
I, I was curious what that, that what, that, so the first condition, A, is a twenty thousand dollar warranty bond that the changes will happen to the sketch plan.
Yes, sir, and that's to, uh, make sure that these changes, um, because the sketch plan does not meet the intent of the ordinance. Uh, or this or this sketch plan does not meet the intent of the ordinance. And so that bond will, um, hold the conditions that Sam has put down, um, to the, to the ordinance, if that makes sense. So, uh, that's to make sure they meet the intent of the ordinance. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and if they don't, they forfeit the bond.
Exactly.
Who is, I guess that's a question again for the, the, I just had to say that happened, right, on a sketch plan. I know we're trying to, it sounds like we're trying to make a way to work with them to approve and move it forward with the way the sketch plan is presented, but if.
That's correct.
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter if we deny it or not. The commissioners can still approve it.
Sketch, I mean, it's.
That's fine.
Unless we table it, it's going to move on.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Right?
Sure, I, I.
Either acceptance or denial will move it forward. A table will stop it.
Yeah, we should deny it.
Alright, I make a motion to, uh, if, unless there's more, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Based off the sketch plan presented, I'll make a motion to deny.
Second. I was in favor of denial. Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Sorry you had to sit here for that.
So it does go to commissioners on February sixth?
Yeah, I mean, and you have plenty of, and hopefully you have time to get, you know, the buffers and what fixed. Thank you.
Sure.
My name's Anna Clifton and, um, we're just simply trying to reopen what's already there. Um, like you said, there's some overgrown vegetation, um. We are not the current owners and so we're also trying to make sure that before we invest any more time and money, that this is something that, that can be reopened. Um, so, like you said, you know, there's a lot of overgrowth. Those numbers may not be accurate. You know, to the best. And I noticed, you know, maybe they were off by just a couple of feet. Um, it wasn't anything significant. So, um, I guess I'm, I'm curious of why the denial.
Ms. Easton?
Um, it is, it specifically goes, uh, specifically does not match what the ordinance requires.
As far as like the buffers, um, specifically, um.
Lot size.
Did, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know how we, we can't go in there and move the RV lots that are currently there and make them, unless we, you know.
What?
Cause we don't own the property and we're not gonna go in and, and do any work to it to, um.
So you don't have to physically move them. You just have to physically show a plan that when it's constructed, they will be moved to meet the new current standard. I mean, it's non-conforming at this point, um, which means it was built how, twenty years ago?
Yes, sir, it was rezoned in twenty, uh, two thousand and two.
And so things have just changed and now it's just got to be brought up to the current standards. So it just needs a accurate rendering of what it's gonna look like by the current rules, if that makes sense.
And can I?
Yeah.
If the desire for it to work and financially work, that's not for us to decide, right? But it is that it needs to stay in the condition that it is pretty well? Then, and I don't know if all of these things are variable, but those would be variances, right? Not us approving the site plan that doesn't meet the requirements. It would be a request to vary certain things to make that work. That, that would be the way I would. I would've looked at that completely different if there was a list of, okay, the buffer requirement's thirty-five feet, but this thing was built twenty years ago. There's an existing something here. It's X number of feet off the, that property line. That, that's, that would've been how I would've looked at it. Then yes, then assuming the variances are in place, now the sketch plan complies because we've granted variances to make it work. I know it seems convoluted and complex, but unfortunately it is convoluted and complex.
Anna, tonight you heard a couple of clients come forward asking for variances from the buffers. So the word variance means you're not held to the standard of the ordinance. And so there's an, there's a opportunity to say, I can't do thirty-five feet, but I can do fifteen. Here's the reason why. Draw it on the picture, right? Then if it's possible that because there's, I'll call them concrete stabs in the ground and, and though all those existing RV pads that exist now are unfeasible to move or financially impossible to move, then you can say, hey, you know, the ordinance says thirty-five foot pad or twenty-five hundred square feet. Because it already exists and because it's already in the ground, I can do two thousand feet or something like that. And you can make the case that that's the reason why you need to vary from the ordinance. Now, those are, are granted not haphazardly, but based on the, on the conditions of what's in the site. And they take into consideration those conditions based on what has changed since that was put on the ground and what the ordinance says now. So those are called variances. There's an application process for it. And you can do more than one variance at one time if that's what you wish to do. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it is a public hearing process.
Same thing.
That gives, well, sketch plans technically not, right?
Yeah, technically not, but the variance process.
The reason why, right? For us to vary the standard, we're not granted that without a public hearing happening.
And I'm assuming that, um, the fifteen acres that was referenced, um, the previous owner had.
So you learned something in that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the fifteen acres, the previous owner, um, it was operating as an RV park with the fifteen, they.
I'm, um, if you will, allow me to adjourn this meeting.
We can still talk.
Meeting adjourned. We'll continue conversation. So she just does have to make notes. Meeting adjourned.
Okay, so I'm just assuming that we're gonna have to rezone that B-three.